When I saw Mr. Lynn Scott standing there, I thought that that fourteenth council position had already been filled. So we were in a closed session meeting of council that started at 5:45. And we did discuss three items. If I can get to them. And the first was advice on the subject of solicitor client privilege and including communications necessary for that purpose. Employment lands Catarock Way Estate Business Park, northeast corner of Venture Drive and Resource Road. The second was advice on the subject of solicitor client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose. Restructuring order arterial roads County of Frontenac. And the third, a proposed repending acquisition of land by the municipality. Employment lands acquisition and inventory replenishment. I will now ask for a motion to rise from closed meeting of council with reporting.
Moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Patterson, that council rise from committee of the whole closed meeting, that the rules of bylaw 2010-1 be waived, and that the chair report.
So I'll ask the clerk, deputy clerk, to report out from the closed session.
Let's move by councillor Scott, seconded by councillor Wrightzel, that the city of Kingston enter into an agreement with the township of South Frontenac and the Frontenac Islands and the county of Frontenac for a period of five years from 2013 to 2017 for the allocation of funds in the aggregate amount of $1,619,458 with payments as follows. Then there's the chart that's located at the top there. And that this agreement represents the final conclusion to the city's responsibilities under the 1997 amalgamation order, section 7.2, compensation, county arterial roads. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign an agreement in a form satisfactory to the city solicitor.
So I will call to question on that. That carries. Approval of the addends, we have a motion of condolence to add a delegation, a new motion which will actually follow with the motions of condolence, and a report from the heritage committee. Will somebody move those? Councillor Downs, seconded by councillor Neil. I'll call to question. Please vote. That carries.
Stand a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Sorry, a point of order, my mistake.
Sure.
I've been, I requested information from the clerk with regard to when I should raise this, and he said after the addends would be appropriate, and I'd like to put the following motion on the floor.
Okay, so it's not, you're not asking for a point of order, but you want to put forward a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, so how would I raise it then?
Just if you.
As a point of personal privilege?
The clerk did notify me in advance, so I knew that you were going to do that, but I will recognize you to put your motion on the floor.
Okay, so is it a point of order or a point of personal privilege?
It would just be, there is really nowhere for it to fall, but I'm just, I'm just going to recognize it and we'll entertain it now.
Okay, thank you, that's appreciated. Move by councillor Downs, seconded by councillor George, that procedural rules of bylaw 2010-1 be waived in order to move new motion number one to be considered after motions of congratulations.
After the delegations, sorry, presentation?
Sorry, it would be motions of, it would, after congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery.
Thank you. So councillor Downs is proposing to move the motion that he has to be after the motions of congratulations, et cetera. And that's seconded by councillor George.
Just to speak quickly to it.
Sure.
There are a number of people who are here for that particular motion, some of them have young families, and I made the offer to try to bring it forward so they can get back home early. Thank you.
Thank you. So when the clerk is ready, we'll call to question on that. Please vote. So now we were on.
Your worship.
Yes, councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship, and I'd also like to move a motion to waive procedural bylaw 2010, seconded by councillor Neil, to allow a delegation on Bell Park Solar Farm from the Friends of Bell Park, please.
Sure, and that's seconded by councillor Neil. This will require two thirds, two thirds as well. So if nobody wants to speak to it, I'll call to question on it. Sorry, that carries. So we are now, is there anybody else? No? Okay. So we are now at the disclosures of potential pecuniary interests. Is there any to disclose? Councillor George?
Yes, thank you, worship. This is in regards to, I, Kevin George, of the council of the corporation of the city of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause three, report number sixty-three of the planning committee, as my company was retained to assist the applicant. And this will also pertain to bylaw six, which is on our agenda this evening as well.
So the clerk will separate those two. Councillor Downs?
Thank you. I, Rick Downs, of the council of the corporation of the city of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motions number two, in that I am an employee of the limestone district school board.
Are there any others? So I'll move on to our, well, we do not have any presentations this evening, so I'll move on to the delegations. Our first delegation this evening is Mr. Ewan McKinnon, who will speak to council in regards to bylaw 2013-38, a bylaw in regards to electoral district boundaries. Mr. McKinnon? And I'll advise you in advance, although I know you've spoken to council before, that you have five minutes, and then each councillor can ask up to two questions.
Good evening councillors, mayor, visitors and guests, other delegations. My name is Ewan McKinnon, and I'm going to be speaking tonight on the proposed electoral district review. As you already know, the purpose of this entire exercise is to ensure effective representation of citizens by elected members of municipal government that people seated here tonight. It was supposed to be a fair and equitable process, it's transparent. One of the stated goals was to achieve maximum population variance of plus or minus 25% between the districts and the city. And part of the exercise was to recognize or quantify future development planned and potential in different areas of the city. As you know, this report was first presented to council in November, and there was a motion to direct staff to seek more input on post-secondary students in particular and how other municipalities counted them. I know that staff sent out a number of letters to other municipalities, and that fourteen of those were responded to specifically on how to address post-secondary student populations. Two of those municipalities that did address post-secondary student populations are very similar to Kingston, those being Guelph and Windsor, and both of those have well-defined areas of student housing, much like Kingston does. And now, as part of the discussion, especially the subsequent or the second review that staff did of the report, one of the exercises was to try and attempt to identify where students live and how many of them live in those areas. And up until November, there'd been a lot of talk about how students move around town, it's very hard to identify where they live and how many live there. And so, Mr. Wallace went out and he found that information, he talked to the post-secondary institutions, and some information was provided to him. And some of that information, I'm going to show you here tonight, I believe this information was also provided to all the councillors in November. And it specifically shows exactly where students do live. And as you can see on the slide behind me, this information was provided by Queens in 2008, and it identifies the density of students placed on postal code and where they live in the city. And I would like to draw to your attention that it's not just the downtown districts that are shown where students are living, you can see this is for the whole city, and you can see where they live throughout. Of course, of particular interest are the downtown districts, where the vast majority of undergraduate students do live. I also have the same information that I'm presenting here tonight for where graduate students live, you'll know they have slightly different housing patterns, they tend to live not as much downtown, they live in smaller units, and they live more throughout the city. However, again, here is an example, the graph of where they live relatively close to Queens. You can see there's a big difference between the slide I showed previously and this one. And in the end of it, I guess I can summarize or say that students do need to be counted. There have been many false claims that the city doesn't know where students live, and as I've just demonstrated, that's simply false, that's not true. We do know where students live, and to a relatively certain degree of accuracy. However, there have been some comments that the same approach is required to determine total population for all districts. We can't take a certain approach to identify how many students or a certain group live in one area of town while ignoring another area of town. However, as I've just shown you, we do have that information. So it's easy for us to say, so many students live downtown, so many live in different townships, the information's there. If any subset is counted in a special way in some districts, that same methodology is to be used for other districts. And I think in the report that was presented two weeks ago, Mr. Wallace and his team did a great job at doing just that, quantifying where students live. This information was provided to staff, and like I said, they use this to determine the total population for all districts, and that was the basis for option four. As I'm sure you've discussed already, Ottawa did a similar exercise where they evaluated their electoral districts. It's important to note that Ottawa bylaw failed to capture communities of interest, and it was on this basis that an appeal to the OMB was made, and it was on that very basis that the bylaw was repealed. It seems that Kingston is now going down that very same road, and it's important to note that post-secondary students are also a community of interest and are an identifiable group under human rights legislation. In the revised report that was presented at council last week, I noticed there was a very interesting line, it was talking about during the public open houses, and at one of those, somebody asked, what happens if we identify students but then just ignore them? Is that not creating a problem? And the response in the report is that if students are not included, and this is challenged on that basis, this bylaw may not be approved by the OMB.
Give thirty seconds.
Responsibility in terms of achieving effective representation is to include post-secondary students. There may be a motion presented later tonight by councillor Scott and Eric Garretson, and they're proposing a special at-large student council position. These are the very same people that two weeks ago said students don't vote, don't count, don't pay taxes. If they're worthy of a special councillor, then they are clearly worthy of being included in the total population counts. Might come up with an extreme alternative when option four is sufficient. Revising or having another crack at this requires more staff time and costs more taxpayer money.
Thank you.
And implicitly acknowledges that option one is not fair.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Are there any questions for delegation? Councillor Downs?
Thank you to the, to the delegate. Would you mind turning back to that slide that you had just at the end?
Which one would you like to see?
Just where it says deferral at the top?
Yes, sir.
And could you elaborate for me what you wanted to say on that slide, please?
Well, two weeks ago, I mean, I'm sure most of you read what was said in the paper while you were in attendance here, and what I got from it was that some councillors said very clearly that students don't vote, don't count, don't pay taxes, we really don't need to count, they don't matter. And some of those same people now are going to present a motion later tonight that actually they do matter, they matter so much, they need their own special councillor. And I mean, we're sort of at opposite ends now. We have a group that doesn't matter, doesn't pay taxes, and don't count, but they should have their own representative. I mean, in itself, having your own representative could be seen as discriminatory or marginalizing a group of people. But it really begs the question, why are we trying to come up with an extreme alternative, this idea of an at-large councillor for one group of people, when option four, the preferred option recommended by staff who have lots of experience in this, who've gone in and had third-party consultants tell them the same thing, is to go with option four? That already counts for students, it already counts, it shows where they live. I mean, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel or put a little training wheel on the side here, we can just go with something that's already proven to work. And I think that the main point I'm trying to make there is that for these councillors and the mayor to now say that, oh, maybe we should have another option here, it implicitly acknowledges that option one is not fair, which was the entire purpose of this exercise. And so I think it certainly makes a position where it's hard to say option one is the right one, but not really.
Just from the general idea, as a citizen with democratic rights, you said that you've gone, you said that the city has gone from not counting students on one side, and then they've gone right across the spectrum to the other side by giving them a special councillor to represent them at council. What, you're a student leader, in your opinion, what do students want? How do they want to be treated?
Just to clarify, I'm not one of the student leaders, I think they're going to speak later on tonight. I am a resident of the current city district, and I think like everybody in this city, everybody wants to count, they want to be treated as an equal, I think that's the purpose of this, to be equitable, so that people want to be one person, one vote. We recognize in Canada that if you're black or white, rich or poor, old or young, one person gets one vote. And in this exercise here, we're trying to say, this other group of people, well, they sort of get a different vote, they're a second-class citizen. And that wasn't the purpose of this exercise. And so I think, I recall when I was at Queens, that I wanted to be treated just like a resident in town. And now that I'm a full-time resident, one of the people that do count, I want those people to be treated the same way. I want students to feel that they have a responsibility to the city of Kingston, that they are part of our city, and that they have something to offer, and likewise, with rights come responsibilities. And it's pretty hard to say, we want these people to do something, and then disrespect them in such a systemic way.
Are there any other questions? Councillor Neil?
Thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation. I'm curious, I'm not sure how long you've lived in Kingston, but in the late eighties there was an there was indeed a student that was elected to represent, to be one of the two representatives at that time in Sidneyham district. And following shortly thereafter, the clerks had an opportunity to, at registration, to actually register students for, during an election year. Were you a student at that time, or were you aware that, that up until amalgamation, we did indeed count students?
I was not aware of that. I wasn't a student at the time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I had one. Mr. McEwen, you're probably aware that the federal government is going through the exact same exercise right now. They are redistricting the writings for the country, and the provincial government always attaches to that. The federal government is going to be using the exact same data source to do its boundaries, and the federal government is currently looking at that. I'm just curious if you have gone to state your case to the federal government as well on the need to have students counted?
I haven't considered that, but now that we know exactly where they all live, maybe it's worthwhile. I'd like to say, though, that I think they're very different, and maybe that argument's a little disingenuous, because when we're talking about provincial and federal writings, we're talking about tens of thousands of people, maybe 100,000 people. In this scenario, we're talking about thousands of people. And in the case of some districts, not counting students, like in the district I live in now, it would take it from a population of 10,000 to 20,000. And that 20,000 voters is 100 percent bigger than the other districts. The whole goal of this was to make it less than 25 percent. And so, now that council knows where the students live and how many of them live there, the cat's out of the bag. We can't plead ignorance anymore and say, it's really hard to identify where they live, it's hard to quantify them. We're not going to count them. Even though that may feel wrong, it's easy to plead ignorance. But now that Mr. Wallace has done such a great job at this very difficult task, we do know where they live. And so, at this point, it can only be arrogance that we would say, you don't count. And I find that just so far-fetched. But to answer the question, it's different at a provincial and federal level, because the districts are already much bigger. And so, yes, if there are 10,000 students that live here and they aren't counted, that's okay, there's 100,000 people here to start with, it's only a 10 percent difference. What we're talking about at the municipal level is 100 percent different.
So size matters?
Indeed. I guess in this case, it does. Population matters.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. McEwen.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
The next delegation we have this evening, Doug Johnson, President of A M S, will speak to council in regards to bylaw 2013-83 being a bylaw in regards to electoral district boundary. Mr. Johnson? And as I indicated to the previous delegation, you have five minutes.
Good evening, your worship, members of City Council, and thank you for having me this evening. As the mayor said, my name's Doug Johnson, I'm the A M S President and CEO. Tonight, I want to spend a few minutes discussing the electoral boundaries realignment issue and address some of the concerns that students and community members have brought to my attention over the past couple of weeks. There's been tremendous amount of confusion surrounding the issue, so I appreciate the opportunity to come here to City Council to clear the air and to represent the voice of Queen's students in front of you tonight. Throughout the next few minutes, I would firstly to address the mayor and councillor Scott's proposal that we heard about yesterday, and present our concerns with this proposal. And secondly, I would like to discuss the electoral boundary redistribution issue and process thus far. Ultimately, what I want to convey to City Council this evening is that the students of Queen's University, of whom I represent, and the community members who I have heard from over the past couple of weeks, are interested in pursuing student integration within the community, whereby students are considered citizens of Kingston and are represented as such in the mapping of our electoral boundaries. On Sunday evening, the mayor met with several members of the A M S to present a proposal which would direct city staff to research the possibility of creating a student city councillor position that would be solely elected by post-secondary students of Kingston. After contemplating the proposal, the A M S communicated to the mayor that we would be publicly opposing this initiative, should he decide to move forward with the announcement on Monday. Following the mayor and councillor Scott's release, the A M S put out its own release addressing our concerns with this proposal. In short, we are pleased that the mayor has recognized the importance of including students, but we believe that this proposal for a student seat is extremely problematic, in terms of representation and in terms of message. This proposal homogenizes student issues, assuming that all students, R M C, St. Lawrence College, and Queen's, have the same interests, when in reality, they vary greatly by district. This is why Kingston uses a district system. It is extremely puzzling that the mayor and councillor Scott had originally voted for an option that did not count students, but are now proposing an entirely new form of representation just for students. The A M S has major concerns with the precedent this will set, how other groups will come to view students and so on, but we also see a very clear way forward. Given the outcry from community members and from students themselves, and given that even Mayor Garretson and councillor Scott now admit the importance of student opinion, revised Option Four is certainly the appropriate way forward. Not only was it recommended by city staff, but it gives equal representation to students without creating an entirely new class of representation. Students want to be treated as Kingstonians, no more, no less. This is why the A M S is advocated for a boundary realignment that does nothing more than recognize the student population. We want what is best for Kingston, and this has to include making students feel like part of the community, not forcing them to choose between voting as a student or voting as a community member. The realignment process needs to integrate students within it, to recognize their existence and integral role in this community. This is not just a student issue, it is a Kingston issue, and the groundswell of community support we have received is recognition that Option One is inherently flawed and violates any fundamental concept of political fairness and representation. What we would like to see from City Council this evening is a recognition of the inherent problems with Option One, as demonstrated by the petition being presented tonight by councillor Neil and the massive outcry from students and community members. Furthermore, I do not believe that the proposal put forward by mayor and councillor Scott is an improvement, and in fact, may be even more flawed than Option One. I believe it is time for our City Council to take a leadership role and either move forward to adopt revised Option Four, or move to defer so that a public meeting on revised Option Four can take place, something that is yet to happen. Sometimes, the hardest thing to do is to go back and say, maybe we missed something, but that is also a sign of great leadership. If my appeal here is not enough, then I would have you consider the thousands of signatures on the petition that will be presented tonight, more than any other student petition that we have held, especially during an exam period. If this is not enough, I would point out to the massive community support that we have been receiving and the media scrutiny this issue has received. And if all of that is not yet enough, I would point to the major legal hurdles facing Option One.
You have 30 seconds.
The A M S executive has been mandated by its highest legislative body to pursue an appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, and we are prepared to do so. But that should not be what we are forced to do. We should be able to take the mayor's newly-formed view that students be included in the redistribution, sorry, the redistricting, and merge that with Kingston's district-based electoral system. I sincerely hope that City Council recognizes the concerns we have raised this evening, and our students and community have risen throughout the past few weeks.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Downs?
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, as President of the A M S, were you or any of your executive members consulted by either the mayor or councillor Scott with regard to an at-large position for students?
Absolutely. So, on Sunday evening, the mayor came to the A M S conference room and met with both the outgoing and incoming executives, as well as both the outgoing and incoming Municipal Affairs Commissioner, and he presented this idea to us. At that time, he raised a few concerns with it, tossed around some ideas, but didn't commit to a yes or no. We wanted to take it away and think about it for sleep on, and then get together the next morning and think about it. The next day, the A M S, in the morning after we had formulated our opinion, communicated with the mayor, and that we did have some very serious concerns with it, and that should he move forward with publicly stating this initiative, that we would be publicly opposing it. And then, the mayor received my email and responded back to me and said, thank you for raising your concerns, we're going ahead with it this afternoon. At that time, we prepared our own press release that we, I guess, will be published that afternoon.
In light of the time of year with students and exams, and my understanding, just from my son's experience, his lease terminating at the end of April, in light of the time of the year, Mr. Johnson, do you think that any measure significant as an at-large student representative on council, do you think that your, the people who elected you president, the students you represent, do you think that they can be effectively canvassed to have their opinions solicited on this particular matter before staff make a report to bring it back to council?
It's a very interesting question, and I think on any other issue, I would say that we've had difficulties getting student opinion in exam periods, but there's something about this one issue that has rallied so much student interest and engagement that has really brought them to the fore, and we've been receiving so many signatures on this petition, I don't want to steal the thunder when it's presented later, but students are really rallying behind this. With that said, we've already recognized that many of our students are here for only eight months, and the exam season ends within the next week, and a lot of them will be leaving. So if we really want student engagement and student input, not only now is the time to do it, but you know, a couple of weeks ago and a couple of months ago was the real prime time to do it, when students were on campus, when they were engaged, when they weren't so focused on their exams and their studies. At the same time, the A M S keeps many full-time salaried staff over the summer that will be working tirelessly on this issue as it moves forward.
Councillor Neil?
Thank you. I appreciate that the mayor had a meeting with you on the Sunday night before. In fact, councillors weren't aware of the motion till the public, till there was a press release, but I'm just curious whether, again, you're aware of the fact that in the past, there has indeed been, at registration, a very active engagement at registration of, right up until amalgamation, and so there were a lot of students on voter's lists up until that time. Are you aware of that kind of history?
Yes, I am, but I think as we look forward in terms of student engagement in elections and how they vote, we have recognized that often those voter turnouts aren't great, and I think the solution to that is finding more creative solutions to get students out and to get them to vote. Find more creative ways to get them to register, and I'm not just talking about Queen's students, I'm talking about Royal Military College and St. Lawrence alike. Find creative ways to get them involved in the debate, in the discussion, and get them out to vote, rather than going backwards on numbers we've had in the past when maybe our initiatives haven't been as far-reaching and basing them on those numbers. The A M S in the past has had extensive campaigns to get students out to vote, and we look forward to the city's support in the next election to further those initiatives.
And I do appreciate that the mayor and, I believe, the secretary had an opportunity to speak to you on the Sunday about this amendment. Was there any communication prior to the disc, I was about to say the debate, but there wasn't really a debate because Option Four never came to the floor? Were you aware that Option Four would not be coming to the floor for debate, and that an alternative motion was going to be, was going to be offered?
No, that is not something that I was aware of.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I have two questions as well, Mr. Johnson. The first one is with respect to the public meetings that City Council had. The very first time that we actually started discussing this issue was at the meeting that Queen's University so graciously hosted for us, and we had four meetings since then, four public meetings since then, albeit they didn't all specifically reference that Option Four specifically. But just generally speaking, did the A M S make a submission, either written or oral on, at any of those public meetings, or to the report at all? To be honest, I quite honestly don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's a great question. Myself, as well as our Municipal Affairs Commissioner, were at the Goods Hall meeting back, I believe it was November 20th, when this was first discussed, and when we saw support from our councillors who reached out to have students engaged or students counted in this process. Upwards at those meetings moving forward, we had our Municipal Affairs Commissioner represent as the representative of the A M S. If you look back, he actually signed that he was with, on behalf of the A M S at these meetings, and he was engaged in the discussion at those meetings. And I think what, one of the things that we've highlighted here, one of the things that we sort of represented as a very clear way forward, and a way to justify having this decision not being made tonight, is that Option Four was never presented for public opinion, and I think that is a very critical component of this discussion here. It's something that we've seen a lot of our city, our community, and our students rally behind, and I think we really need to give them the opportunity in a public forum to discuss these. Up until now, they've only had the opportunity to discuss one through three, and from what we've been hearing from the groundswell support, if Option Four is really a favorite from those, some of those in the room and many of those not in the room this evening, let's give them the opportunity to voice that in a public meeting.
Thank you. And the other question, along the same lines of the one that I was asking the previous delegation. So, the federal and provincial government are currently going through the process of redefining the geographic boundaries, and as a result of using the exact same data set that the city of Kingston is proposing to use, the federal government's proposal right now, which is up to here delegations on, is to draw the line at the 401, and everything north of 401 will no longer be part of Kingston and the islands. If the federal government and provincial government decided to count the students as you're suggesting the city of Kingston should, that line might actually come a lot further south for the separation. We might even end up with two provincial and federal electoral districts in the city of Kingston. I'm curious if the A M S has had any correspondence or presented delegation to the federal committee that's looking at doing that, and they've been doing that for a bit the last year.
Yeah, so to answer your question, and I think I don't want to step on the toes of our previous speaker, because I agree with a lot of the things he said. To answer bluntly, the A M S has not had that sort of communication, but at the same time, if you're asking me if this information is going to change the way it's working at a provincial or federal level, I don't believe that I'm qualified to answer that question. Perhaps that's something that we can bring forward as a City Council through that process.
No, I just want, I was just asking if you submitted anything?
We haven't yet, perhaps, it's something we will consider.
Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson, I just have one question related to your answer to the mayor's first question. I believe that you used the words, you saw support from our councillors. And I'm curious if you believe that councillors that do not represent the downtown, councillors that represent suburban areas of the city, do you believe that those councillors are also interested in student issues and are willing to represent students, as we saw earlier, that there are students living in other areas of the city as well?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question, and I don't mean to come across in the way when we speak about these four city councillors that represent districts that have very diverse populations. I don't want to get territorial in that they say, they're ours, they're students, because they're not, they have very diverse districts, and they have a responsibility to represent all the opinions of their constituents. When I say "our," I think I'm talking as a Kingstonian, as a resident of this city, and talking about the entire City Council. There are so many different, oh, I guess, what I want to say is that the A M S has received support from these city councillors that may not represent these four districts in the past on various issues. At the same time, I have been asked, do I feel that the current, those four city councillors accurately represent student opinions? And certainly, the A M S has always enjoyed a working relationship with these four, as well as many other city councillors in the past, and it is a byproduct of our process of establishing greater town-gown relations. So certainly, I think all of these city councillors have the responsibility to represent their constituents, and in the past, we have seen support from those outside of these four.
Thank you.
Anybody else who has not asked a question? Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. The next delegation, where did my edits go? I folded them up to write on. Yes, Mr., sorry, I apologize, Jean Reeve, President, Society of Graduate and Professional Students of Queen's University, so we're going to address the same issue.
Thanks very much. First, just with respect to my colleague, who is actually the still-sitting S G P S President, I'm actually the incoming S G P S President, it's still a week of transition ago, but I wanted to speak to this issue. So, I am the, as I said, the incoming President of the Queen's Graduate and Professional Student Society, representing about a quarter of Queen's students. I'm also a senior PhD candidate, teaching fellow in political science, political studies at Queen's University, and also a Kingstonian. I've lived in Kingston for almost five years, I consider myself to be a resident here. First... First, I just want to thank the mayor and city council for granting me the time to speak on behalf of my delegation. First, at the outset, it's likely obvious by now that we are also opposed to council's decision to select a redistricting approach that does not make the greatest possible effort to count students, graduate, undergraduate college, or otherwise, as citizens of Kingston and determine electoral boundaries. We're certainly sensitive to the need to create a set of electoral boundaries that reflect the current and near-future demographic realities of the city. All we ask is to be part of this notice. In addition, we understand the difficulties that arise and have arisen in the past in counting students. However, we feel close partnership with our institution, as well as the other post-secondary institutions, could easily resolve this issue. As the Electoral Boundary District Review noted, and as previous presentations this evening have alluded to, there are few directions I'd like to take my approach concerns around this issue. First, it's perspective of basic democratic principles. As a soon-to-be bona fide political scientist, hopefully, if I pass my dissertation, particularly one that focuses on Canadian governance, these issues lie particularly close to my heart and to my mind. What is key in the realm of voting is not just that every citizen who is of age has the ability to vote, but that these votes are relatively equal value, or at least that there is no structure within the rules that ensures that their votes have significantly lesser value. Similarly, individual citizens are entitled to roughly similar forms of representation. For instance, they should not have to share their representatives with significantly greater numbers of people than others. In short, the current position violates one of the key principles of democracy, equal citizenship. Equal citizenship is not just the right to vote. If council acknowledges that students are citizens by extending them the right to vote and then excludes them from other elements of equal citizenship, such as counting for the purposes of electoral district formatting, they must acknowledge that they feel that students are not equal citizens of our city. Second, students make use of municipal services, they pay municipal fees, utilize local infrastructure. Students pay bills to Utilities Kingston, buy parking tickets, divert tens of thousands of dollars through student fees to Kingston Transit. To be charged fees for these services without equal representation is, again, a violation of basic democratic principles. We're not talking about tourists who spend a weekend downtown, might take the bus, but citizens who spend the vast majority of their time for a good number of years in the city. This is all without even mentioning the massive boon students provide for downtown businesses, as both customers and employees. Finally, I want to key in on the reasons that have been stated publicly for this exclusion. One explanation for the exclusion is that citizens are, that students are temporary residents, both within a calendar year and over their lives. I find this to be an irrelevant distinction. Unless the council intends to perform a census of the full population and exclude every Kingstonian who has not lived the whole year in the city, or who may not stay in the city for more than four or five years, this remains an arbitrary discriminatory practice that targets except only students. Further, I challenge the council to produce evidence of what number of students, particularly graduate students, who do not spend the majority of their year living in the city. Second, an argument has been advanced that students are not engaged in politics and thus shouldn't be counted. The idea that citizens who do not vote at the average level or participate actively should be excluded from equal citizenship is an idea so dangerous and so wrong-headed that it barely warrants any further comment. But suffice to say that a more positive process that engages students and attempts to make them engage in our city would be more welcome and effective than one that seeks to further isolate them. Finally, I briefly want to discuss the idea advanced by the mayor to create a student councillor. Similar to my colleagues in the AMS, I have serious reservations about whether this would lead to better representation of student interests, especially for graduate professional students, who are often more closely integrated with their neighboring community over a longer period of time. However, I commend the mayor's openness to the need for student representation and the creativity and structural flexibility that the presented plan demonstrates. As such, I would ask council to delay the current decision in order to have discussions involve student representatives and discuss all plausible options, including the mayor's proposal, the recommended option four, any other options that are brought forward, so that we can arrive at the best conclusion for students and the city. I take pride in this city, and I've been happy to live here for these past five years.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. As well, as I also love my place of work and education at Queen's University. I don't want to be put in a position where I feel these things are in conflict. Against the popular conception of the student that often exists in the city, I've often considered staying in Kingston after I finished my studies, sometimes to the astonishment of my friends on the west coast. The reason for this is that I've grown attached to Kingston in a serious way in my five years here, through my involvement in our shared community. However, I wouldn't be comfortable living in a city that violates such basic principles of democracy, and I doubt I'm alone in this. I hope council will reconsider its position, and as with the other speakers, I'll welcome any questions.
Thank you. I wasn't watching my stopwatch, so when I said thirty seconds, you're actually at five minutes, so you had an extra thirty, but.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Would anybody like to ask a question of the delegation? Counselor Downs.
Would it be, excellent presentation, would it be a fair summary of your presentation to say that students, post-secondary students in Kingston, want nothing more or nothing less?
Sorry, I'll just interrupt your question. Whoever has the telephone, if you could please turn the ringer off or put it on vibrate, that would be greatly appreciated, and perhaps if everybody else could check your phone just to make sure that it doesn't start ringing to interrupt, that'd be great. Please continue.
Would it be a fair summary of what you have said to say that post-secondary students in Kingston want nothing more or nothing less than simple equality with their fellow citizens?
I think that's exactly what I'm trying to present, that I think that the decision to exclude students is an incredibly arbitrary one. The second, in a democracy, you start selecting any group of people for exclusion from equal citizenship, you step into murky and dangerous territory, and even the justifications that have been given are, again, arbitrary and apply to other Kingstonians, as well as they do to students.
Counselor Reif.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. Just a very quick question. Mr. Reeve, how many times in your five years of attending Queen's University and being in Kingston have you had opportunity to phone up a councillor and ask questions? Have you, have you had occasion in the past to do that?
I have on a couple occasions, actually, once on a dispute with Utilities Kingston, and another time just with a sort of garbage collection issue. So it's a couple of times I have phoned councillors. I've moved a couple of times in my time, so I've actually lived in a couple of different districts, but yes, and I don't think that I'm unique in that respect.
Okay, and secondly, would you have a problem phoning any councillor in any other district to offer you assistance?
If I felt that my problem wasn't unique specifically to my particular area, then yes, certainly, I would be happy to contact any councillor if I felt that they would be interested in listening to my problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. Our speaker, in his discussion of representation, sizes of districts, numbers of people, those sorts of things, seemed to touch on that term "effective representation," which Madam Justice McLaughlin used in the Carter decision when Saskatchewan's provincial boundaries were referred to the Supreme Court. And I wonder if in our speaker's work, if he has had occasion to explore more fully the concept of effective representation as it has evolved since that decision more than twenty years ago, and if he could elaborate on the brief comments that he made that seemed to, that seemed to refer to us, and how that term is being understood today and being used today.
Well, I would definitely be stepping outside my bounds, even as a teacher of political science, to preach democratic practice to elected councillors. To just briefly summarize, especially as relates to this particular issue, effective representation has to do with the representative having some sense of the factors, the history, and the desires and aspirations of people within their jurisdiction. One of the things that can hamper this, especially in a city council situation where they don't always have the amount of time and support that, say, federal or provincial members do, is to have boundaries and jurisdictional populations that are manageable. If the size of those jurisdictions grows too large, then it makes it much more difficult for the individual member to both understand the sort of attributes and preferences that exist within, but also to represent them accurately, given that there's only so much time and representative to bring facts forward from their jurisdiction. So I know that this is at the heart of why city council is considering the redistricting in the first place, and again, I'm merely asking that students be considered in the same way as other Kingstonians in those factors. I could go on for another two hours, but I think in the interest of time, that's good.
Thank you very much.
I had one question, and it, I guess it goes back to the question about the representation in terms of calling a councillor for assistance. Back in the fall, council brought forward a proposal to change the number of garbage bags that we pick up from two to one, and the AMS came and spoke adamantly against that proposal, yet all four of the, their councillors voted against that. Do you feel confident that you could be represented effectively, still using that district model, given that an experience and things like that occur?
I think it's important to remember that for any citizen, there are issues that both pertain specifically to their geographic district, their neighborhood, their neighbors, as well as issues that are more at a citywide basis. I come here today speaking to an issue that I think is important to our whole city, not to be seen as a city that discriminates against particular citizens, and so I'm appealing to every councillor here in the statements that I make. If I have an issue that pertains more specifically to my neighborhood, my area that I live in, I would feel much more comfortable talking to the representative that is from my area. So again, regardless of whether there are some issues that are of citywide importance or some are of neighborhood importance, it's important to ensure that boundaries and jurisdictions are equitable and that all citizens have equal opportunity to approach their representatives and those issues.
So my follow-on question to that, given your political background in terms of your education, wouldn't a hybrid model then of having some people elected by district and others elected by a particular interest group or at-large, which we do see, because in the province of Ontario, there are municipalities that elect members at-large, wouldn't you see a hybrid model almost working better, because you get the best of both worlds in that you get a little bit of that district representation, but then you also get a bit of that representation of those specific needs? Or, or maybe not, like, I'm just curious of your opinion on it?
So I don't think that this is something we can fully canvas in a quick response to a question, which is why I think that we should take a look at these things more closely in an integrated meeting with student representatives. But just my initial reflections, these are models that do exist, and there are number of large systems in municipalities in North America that do things similar to this, so it's not a completely landish proposal in theory. The thing that I think particularly for graduate students, which is what I'll speak to, that would be problematic, is many of us do see ourselves both as students and as members of the community. I definitely see myself that way. I would have a difficult time deciding whether I felt more comfortable voting for a student councillor who would be representing my interests along with all other students that exist within the city, undergraduate college students, or whether I'd be more comfortable with the traditional model of voting within my particular constituency. I think this is just one problem. The AMS report raised many others. I'm not saying that these problems necessarily scuttle the idea as a concept, but I think certainly it warrants considerably more discussion than we have time for.
Thank you, and I do know it was a tough question, but I just figure, given your knowledge, it would be a great opportunity to ask that. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. Mr. Reeve, students are at many different stages of accommodation and living in Kingston. So we've realized there's, I believe my tally is about sixty-five hundred students who live in residence at St. Lawrence College, Queens, and at RMC. Then we have the students who live communally, somebody's rented a house. These students are very difficult for us to find because they're not listed anywhere, we have no idea actually where they are. But we have the students who have actually moved to Kingston, and by my calculation, again, we've got about forty-five hundred, I assume mostly grad students, who have actually registered to their address in Kingston, and they show up in the census. And as showing up in the census, they're already considered within electoral boundaries within Kingston. So quite simply, you are a Kingstonian, and with all of the other considerations of everybody else, because you've changed your address to Kingston and you're being picked up by the census and the district reflects that. So, welcome to Kingston. So beyond that, we have all the students who actually live in Kingston.
Question.
Counselor Downs, so the proper procedure would be to say point of order, and then we'll try it.
Point of order?
Yes, Counselor Downs.
Question, please.
Yes, Counselor Scott, a little bit of prelude is acceptable, but if you could get to the question, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. So quite simply there, because I'll deal with this later on. So you quite comfortable looking at the situation here within those, those numbers? Because you do realize there are many different categories of students here. So could I get you to reflect on, within what I've just said here, how you fit into that?
Sure. Not that I think that I should be considered the only relevant person, but to reveal my history. I'm actually not certain that I've counted, because when I last filled out the census, I can't recall whether my opinion was that I was going to be staying on if Queen's, staying on in Kingston, so I may have actually even used the address of my parents in British Columbia on my census. And because the census is so infrequent, this is one of the issues that we face, even as graduate students, many of us start with a one-year masters, as I did, make decisions about whether or not to stay on after that. So, and on top of this, I mean, I understand the complexity that exists within these numbers, but frankly, I think that it's just one of the realities that municipalities that have significant post-secondary populations have to cope with, and a best effort should be made to accommodate those people, because as I've been saying multiple times, they are, they are citizens, so it's difficult, but I think it's worthy, it's worthy of any questions.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I just want to quickly comment that I don't think you have to worry about your dissertation, but it was an excellent presentation. But I, I guess, and I'm not sure what your relative situation is, but you sound to me as if you have a sense of place and a sense of belonging in a neighborhood. Would you feel that anything that said you couldn't vote in the district, that given your enrollment as a student, you had to vote with a group collectively called post-secondary students, the between twenty and thirty thousand of voters, voting age in the city? Would you feel that you were not having an opportunity to be represented within your neighborhood as, as a resident?
One of the first things that came to mind when I first heard of the proposal was that obviously, when you move to an at-large system, it represents people as a sort of identified group, as opposed to a regional sort of cluster, is that then the regional representatives for those neighborhoods lose the incentive, in fact, it would be almost irresponsible to represent the interests of students if there was also an at-large student representative. And I would actually, I think that would be a serious step backwards in many regards for the relations that exist for the neighborhoods and jurisdictions that do contain a significant amount of students, as well as non-student citizens within the city. But to get to the personal question, yes, I think, I feel very attached to a particular neighborhood in which I live, and I have good relationships with my neighbors, some of whom are students, most of whom are not, and with the institutions that exist within my neighborhood, so yes, I would have concerns about being isolated.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, if I might, I came here as a graduate student with a young, young child, married. I'm not sure what your situation, but I'm sure some of your colleagues have partners and families here. How do you think they would feel about their spouse being able to vote in a district and they, they being unable or precluded from voting in a district?
Certainly, it's a major issue. Many of my membership in particular are married, some with spouses who are students, but many who have spouses who work professionally in the city or nearby communities as well. Many have children that are attending schools here in the city, and it would mean that, say, a single parent who's a student wouldn't actually be able to vote for a member who would be able to actively advance issues of education that might be directly relevant to them and to their children, which would obviously be a serious problem. You know, we have many things in common with the other students here in Kingston, but we also have some very distinct issues and lifestyle elements just by virtue of being older, if nothing else.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Reeve, I'm, I'm sorry, just as a, a quick follow-up, just to your answer to the last question, are you under the understanding that if a student is not necessarily counted in the numbers, that they don't have the right to vote?
No, I'm under that question. It's merely a matter of representation.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Councillor, wait, did you ask questions yet? You did.
I'll be right back.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for taking the time to come and, and talk to us. The added delegation that was done on the floor, is it Mr Menard, is he gonna, are you, I thought I saw him walking, there he is, who will speak to council regarding the Bell Park issue that's on the agenda? Report sixty-two, I think, or something. Five minutes?
Five minutes, all right. First off, I wish to apologize for my attire. I'm freshly, not so fresh from the round of Bell Park, so I would otherwise add a regular black suit. I prepared, first off, I'm not an expert on solar panels, but I listen well, and I listen to a large group of people, and I was able to distill for them a day of reporting to the circularly council, raising sixteen distinct issues that I felt had not been answered. I've had a chance to review the materials that the staff has put out, and perhaps some of the answers are in there, perhaps not. Close it? Thank you. But the, the difficulty is that this is a very complex issue, and it could have gone to the Keefe County Committee, where it could have been dealt with in a smaller, quieter environment, and all of, a lot of these questions were asked and answered, but no, now it is before you as a very large question yet again tonight. Now, with the reactions that I observed at the public meetings from the public, it seemed to me that they were so negative to this project that I thought councillor staff and its wisdom would have let this thing litter the vine, and justifiably so, but no, we're back. The Friends of Bell Park operate on two avenues, two tracks or two channels, whatever you want to call it. We've been working with staff, and I have to say that it's been successful in many respects, there's a great deal of effort, there's a lot of listening going on there, and kudos to staff on that. It is, it progresses, like morbid it progresses. On the other avenue, it's the solar panel, and there is no doubt, and now I speak as the president for the Friends of Bell Park, absolute opposition to solar panels in this urban area. The idea of installing an industrial site in a UNESCO-designated area, visible from the towers downtown from the bridge, it's almost as bad as a white mushroom coming in on Highway Two, where you used to come in and you were awed by what you saw looking down in the city of Kingston, it looked like something, I don't know, out of a Turner. And now you come in, and what do you see? You see the mushroom on one side, and you see there are industrial buildings on the other that they're building on their own playing fields. You can't control them, but you can control Bell Park. You can control the vistas that are available there. Now, there's sixteen points, I can't even get close to touching on a lockroom. What really concerns me is that you're being asked tonight, while we're fighting for crumbs to bring buckets of dirt on to fill holes and make it safer to play golf at Bell Park, you're being asked to vote a hundred and forty thousand dollars to prepare an application that may not go ahead. Well, I tell you, you really should wait until it's a certainty. You really should wait until this is something you really want. You say, yes, we'll go for it, you don't need it in two thousand thirteen, fifteen or sixteen. Meanwhile, let Bell Park continue to operate, but this idea that you're going to do a speculative application, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, just to get ready for something that might not go ahead, I ask you, where's the sense of stewardship of our citizens' funds for this money? This is not necessary tonight. You have option two, and I urge you on option two, take this mule off the rack, get rid of it, all right? The people have spoken, they want, at the very least, to have pass a park throughout there. There's a whole bunch of them that want to continue playing at Bell Park and use it. So you have an option tonight, if you want to vote. Gird yourself and say, the end of that, because you can always take the solar option and take it outside of the urban area. Why is this, why do people want to put this into an inner-city situation? Just does not make sense. It's a misconceived, misconstrued project. I am concerned about that hundred and forty thousand dollars. I suggest to you, if you choose any other neighbourhood, and you said that you were going to be taking over five acres, fifteen, ten acres, whatever, and turned it into an industrial site, you'd have opposition coming right, left and centre.
Thirty seconds.
Why is it here? The closing, that was thirty seconds?
You have thirty seconds.
All right. I want to close by what one of them said to us, one of ours, and I have to paraphrase because I wasn't recording, said simply, look at that, I used to live across from Bell Park, I watched those, for twenty-five years, they dumped garbage across from my house. For twenty-five years, I saw rabbits, rats as big as rabbits running around while I was trying to raise my kid. Then they built Bell Park, and I said, that's right, that's good, that's some payback, some recompense for that. Now they come back and they say, we're taking it away again, we're going to put an industrial site in.
Thank you.
There are rats, but not acceptable. I open the questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Thank you very much, Mr Menard.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you letting me in with this.
Okay, so next on the agendas are briefings, and Mr Jeff Guerin, the CEO of Kingston Economic Development Corporation, will speak to council regarding KEDCO. When I see that Dean Brian's also, Dean Burns is also with Mr Guerin, who is the Chair of the Board.
Thank you, Worship. We wanted to just provide a quick update, a quick overview.
Well, you have ten minutes either way, Mr Guerin, so.
It'll be quick, just like budget, Worship. Remember that award, three, four months.
You don't, you don't qualify for the award, have to be internal staff only.
That's right, that's right. Well, we need a new one. The, just to give council a quick update in terms of our strategic planning processes, so Mark Our Committee has done their strategic planning committee, in contemplation of council's upcoming meetings next week in terms of priority setting, to reflect on where we're at and how a process we've established can work nicely with concepts and ideas that council comes up with next week in their priority setting session. Of course, we're currently operating under our 2010-2015 plan, we're going to be soon in development of our 2015-2020 plan, core measurement always being jobs and investment, supported by key markets, attraction with sub-markets, growth and retention, tourism marketing development, and community economic development, particularly what we do for small businesses in the city. Last year, the Strategic Planning Committee of the Board, and endorsed by the Board, passed a process by which we will develop our new 2015-2020 plan. Staff of the Strategic Planning Committee will look at sectors, services to provide for businesses, have some discussions with our customers and stakeholders locally, and put it through a, a process map and a proper sector analysis of things that we were looking at ourselves in terms of sectors to pursue, or things that council might ask us to consider through your priority planning process. That way, both plans will speak to each other and work cohesively and complement each other. Of course, the Community and Sustainability Plan, as council knows, is the overarching document, similar to what falls under your strategic plan and your corporate department plans. Of course, our main ways to be particularly interested in the Economic Development pillar, and I think this is just a good reflection on the markets we're responsible for under the Economic Development pillar, and the markets that the city has the lead on, so that we differentiate between them. If council, through the priorities setting session, asks us to consider other things, then we have to go back through our strategic planning process through our board to do an analysis of what we can and can't do based on the resources that we have. But certainly under the Economic pillar, there are things that are the KEDCO lead, and there are things that are the city lead, where we try to provide some support we can, but at the same time not have a dramatic impact on our strategic and operational plans that our board has approved. This is part of our operating plan, where we, we, our hope and our goal and our objective every day is to spend seventy percent of our time on sales, or sales marketing agency, filling our sales pipeline, company visits, new lead generation. Directly related, we have twenty percent of our time planning, building, utilities, kitchen, high-grill wastewater, to support our customers, working with our partners with the city of utilities in terms of their developments. And in the third category, we have ten percent of our time on supporting files that support the bigger picture, but not primarily our main focus or our main mandate as a sales and marketing agency and part of our strategic planning process. So, I said it would be brief, we're certainly happy to consider any discussions or options that come up in the priority setting session next week, but thought it was a good time to give a very brief update on our current plan and the process the board has approved, how to look at new services or new sectors that may come up through the council priority setting session, that they would, you would like us to consider in our new plans, and the systematic process and analysis which will take place to review those.
Thank you, Mr Guerin. Yes, that was under four minutes of the allotted ten, so, but of course, questions from council on the briefing? Are you, I don't want to put you on the spot, did you say you're going to be at the strategic planning session, or you're not?
No, I believe that's a.
It's an inter, more of an internal thing anyways, so, okay. Well, if there are any questions, council can follow up with an email.
Absolutely.
Thank you to both of you for coming this evening. Petitions, Councillor Downs?
Thank you. I have a petition from my constituents in Katerakwe that reads as follows. At their meeting scheduled for seven-thirty PM on Tuesday, the twenty-third of April 2013, Kingston City Council are expected to vote on a motion brought by councillor Rick Downs to move the site plan, file number D110072013, for the forty-one residential unit building proposed to be built at seven-forty Augusta Drive to the planning committee. A copy of the motion brought by councillor Downs is attached. We, the petitioners, support the motion. We agree that there are a number of serious neighbourhood concerns regarding the proposed development that need to be considered and addressed, and this is signed by a hundred and sixty-two people.
Thank you. Councillor Neil? Councillor Neil?
Thank you. I have a petition that was organised by AMS, and it represents both students and the Queen's community. It reads, we, the undersigned, disapprove of the decision made by Kingston City Council to not include students in the makeup of the population in the electoral district boundary review for the upcoming 2014 municipal election. We would encourage members of city council to repeal this decision and vote in favour of revised option four as presented to council, which takes into consideration students within the makeup of the population of electoral districts across the city. And it's my understanding that there's, they had two thousand signatures and more came in since then, so I'll leave it with the clerks to say what the final count was.
Smart move.
There goes your morning.
Councillor Shell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a petition to the Mayor and Councillors of the City of Kingston. The city's strategic plan dictates creating and protecting green spaces, yet on February seventh, a draft parkland bylaw was presented to the public at the planning committee meeting of the Kingston City Council that does not respect either the spirit or the letter of the city's strategic plan. It will negatively affect the public because it fails to take into account the need to redouble efforts to grow city green spaces in the face of rapid climate change, contains provisions at variance with provincial standards and the practices of other Ontario cities, discourages developers from creating and preserving parkland, and even foresees passing along costs to acquire green spaces to taxpayers, threatens the integrity of what the city's external consultants call a high-quality public realm that has a tremendous value for all. We request that city staff and council develop a new draft parkland bylaw in line with the strategic plan and the goals of the Sustainable Kingston Plan, which calls for actively conserving, protecting, restoring, enhancing and expanding natural areas and green space for public enjoyment, community health and ecosystem resiliency. And they did this on February seventh and do acknowledge that there has been a change, but the petition was created. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions? Okay, so then I will move to the motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences and speedy recovery. Moved, motion, sorry, first with congratulations, moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hector, that congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Dan Cuthill, Engineering, and his wife Cassidy on the birth of their baby girl, Emery, born April eighth, 2013. Moved by councillor George, seconded by Mayor Garretson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Justin Trudeau on being elected as the leader of the Liberal Party of Canada on Sunday, April fourteenth, 2013. We look forward to working with Mr Trudeau and other party leaders on advocating Kingston's We have two motions of condolence, moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor, moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hector, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the people of Boston, Massachusetts, and all those participating in the Boston Marathon, to the individuals injured and the families who lost a loved one in the tragic events of April fifteenth, and our thoughts are with you. Moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hector, that condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Alan MacLeod, senior legal counsel in the passing of his mother, Elizabeth Barker MacLeod. Our thoughts are with Alan and his family during this difficult time. Alaska, and then we will deal with the motion regarding the moment of silence. I will ask the clerk to call the question on those. Please vote. Those carry. Under the new motions, we have, moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by councillor Berg, that procedural bylaw 2010-01 be waived, and that the council agenda be amended to add a moment of silence following the motions of condolence in memory of the tragedy that struck the Boston Marathon and participants throughout the world on April fifteenth, 2013. This will require two-thirds of council. Please vote. We do not have any deferred motions on the agenda. Thank you. Now we turn to the councillor Downs' motion in the agenda. Sorry, I'm just getting to it here. It's moved by councillor Downs and seconded by councillor Shell, that the site plan for file D11007-2013 filed D eleven double oh seven dash two thousand and thirteen be bumped up to Planning Committee. Councilor Downs?
Thank you very much, your worship. Just on page thirty and thirty-one, I'm sure that members have had a chance to look over the motion. I think it's pretty straightforward. I want to make it very clear that what we have in this situation is a good developer and good citizens who have started a good dialogue that started on April third. We had a good meeting of the developer and community members on April thirteenth, and I'm requesting a bump up to have the concerns of my constituents addressed by the professional staff of the Planning Department when everyone is in the same room. So, thank you to all members of council for your consideration.
Would anybody else like to speak? Councilor He, or Deputy Mayor Hector, will you take the chair?
I have the chair, and I recognize you.
I just want to say that I think that this is the perfect example of the new change to the bump up. The fact that a petition was presented and the fact that this came forward in this manner, it reassures me that the decision we made in the past to make this change was the right one, and I'm more than happy to support this. This is the whole idea, so I'm really glad to see the way that this came forward. Councilor Downs, thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor, obviously will support this. But I'm, I'm, this is a model example of how it should happen. Thank you.
Thank you, worship.
I now return the chair to you. I have not recognized you, Councilor Downs. I now return the chair to you.
You can speak last, Councilor Downs, if nobody else wants to speak. Would anybody else like to speak? Councilor Downs?
Thank you, your worship. I just think that earlier, I was kind of described as a city councillor representing the downtown area, but I, I'm sure that all members of council and all members of the public know that one-half of my constituency is the suburbs, and the other half is, is in the city. And I think it's my duty to represent all of my constituents at all times, so I just wanted to make that clear in light of a point that was made earlier.
Thank you. So, with that, I'll call the question. Waiting on one person. No, we got it. Carries unanimously. If there are members of the public that are here for this, I know we moved this up in the agenda for you, and you'd like to leave, you can do so now. I'll wait thirty seconds so that you have an opportunity to do that. So now we move back in the agenda to deferred motions, of which we do not, we do not have any. So now we move to report sixty from the CAO.
It's moved by Councilor Wrightsall, seconded by Councilor George, the report number sixty from the chief administrative officer, consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so, would anybody like to separate any of the items? All right, so we deal with them all as one. First is a ward of tender for sidewalk bus pads, second is a ward of contract for janitorial services for various city locations, and the third is vote technology for the two thousand and fourteen municipal election. Called a question on those? Mr. Clerk? Oh, yeah, called a question?
Councilor Downs, are you signed in?
It's carries. Report sixty-one from the CAO.
It's moved by Councilor Hector, seconded by Councilor Scott, the report number sixty-one from the chief administrative officer, recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
The first clause is with respect to the fourth quarter operating budget for two thousand and twelve. Councilor Hector, Deputy Mayor Hector?
Thank you, worship. Through you, I was a little concerned that when I, when I was looking at this, that there was over, my calculations was about, say, four and a half percent return on, on the, on the budget, and I was wondering if, if the treasurer could comment a little on, on, on that, given that it's four and a half percent, and we charged our constituents two and a half percent.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, your worship. In response to that, just two points to make with respect to that. First of all, the, of the four million dollars, approximately three and a half of that is our municipal operating surplus, so there is some library and police surpluses in there as well from our, our separate agencies. And so that represents, we have a gross budget of about three hundred million dollars, a gross operating budget, so that's about a one percent surplus, so I think certainly in my opinion, that's, that's a pretty good financial management in terms of, of that number. However, having said that, for three and a half million dollars, and to the question at point, we, as you may remember, in the two thousand and thirteen budget, council initially, we had been working towards a three and a half percent tax increase, and council had asked staff to come back with a proposal for a two and a half percent, and so in finding that about one point six million dollars, we looked at the two thousand and twelve projected results at that point in time, and we actually factored in some of those savings into the two thousand and thirteen budget. So just to give you an example, our WSIB costs in the report, it talks about having some savings there of about five hundred thousand dollars, and if you look at our two thousand and thirteen budget for WSIB, it's five hundred thousand dollars less than our two thousand, two thousand, our two hundred, two thousand and twelve budget. So we have factored the majority of those savings in. The other component is just one-time costs that were, were specific to two thousand and twelve, and we wouldn't see them again.
Thank you, and to follow on question, through you, your worship, to Commissioner Hurdle, regarding Exhibit E and the arena's quarterly performance report, and I'm, I'm quite concerned about the fact that we're, we're operating on prime time only around sixty to seventy percent occupancy on our ice, and non-prime time fifty or less percent, and, and I'm wondering if there's any strategy or, or where our biggest costs are so that we can have a strategy at, at trying to reduce that, that deficit that we're running.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I'd like to, to offer a, a point of clarification. I had the opportunity to speak with Councilor Hector today, but that's something that I probably forgot to mention in our conversation, is that the percentage that's showing in terms of prime time book ice and floor reflects the overall yearly use, so that includes when we don't actually have ice in, but we are only booking the floor, which is a lot less popular, obviously, than the ice. If we strictly look at the ice, we have a seventy-eight percent usage, which is higher than what you see in the numbers in the report.
So what, where is the, our, our biggest cost in terms of running the arenas, and do we have a, a strategy to deal with the non-prime time and the overall vacancies that we do have?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the largest costs for arenas are obviously with utilities and salaries, that's where they usually are. In terms of making changes, we have been making some changes in the past few years, as councils are aware, we did, we were able to remove one arena from the system, which was causing more challenges in terms of the overall cost, and if you look at what was budgeted in two thousand and twelve and the actuals, we were actually under budget, which is start, not necessarily where we need to be, we recognize that. So we continue with our energy efficiency program, and, and as you know, we do apply the rental fee increase of three percent on a yearly basis in the arenas. In terms of the non-prime, that's a challenge that we have, not just in arenas, but all our facilities, and what we have done, or some of the things we, we've been trying, is reduce rate for non-prime to try to encourage more use and get more uptake. That has been, we, we've seen some results out of that, but not obviously as much as we would have liked, but one thing to note is the non-prime will never be at fifty or sixty percent, that, that's just not going to happen.
Thank you.
Councilor Wrightsall?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I have a couple of questions regarding the Grand Theatre. A number of my own constituents now have been asking me some questions regarding the costs around the Grand Theatre, and the first one goes something like this, what amounts are included from taxpayers to cover the mortgage and any other costs not covered by revenues realized from activities at the Grand Theatre?
Commissioner Beach?
So the two components with respect to the Grand Theatre that are subsidized through tax, revenues as opposed to revenues from the, either the activities that take place that are revenue generating, or rentals. There is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of operating expenses, and we have been decreasing those, so they will be continuing to decrease in our budgeting plan, and then we also have eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year that's put towards capital in the facility as well. So those are the two components.
Thank you, and just one last question that I've been asked a number of times, and I was hoping you could answer tonight, is what was the final cost of completing the renovations at the Grand Theatre?
That's kind of getting away from this particular budget, but if you can answer that quickly.
So I want to clarify, there's been a number of renovations, and the Grand Theatre is not a, it's not a new building, it's not a building that was completely rebuilt, but the, there was a larger component of renovations that was done, which was seventeen point two million, and that's the primary source of that capital contribution, but there's also ongoing contributions to the building envelope, to the HVAC systems, to the systems within the building, and that's included in the capital contribution, and we've made a number of accessibility improvements as well.
Thank you, I appreciate receiving that answer. Thank you, worship, for the levity you showed there. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll call the question on this. Mr. Clerk? Carries. On the second item, seniors association expansion of services. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I'm quite delighted to see this. Anything we can do to help the seniors center out, have an incredible contribution to the community? I have received requests from rural residents for service, and it is mentioned in the report, and I'm just wondering if staff can identify how this refinancing and will, and what the programming will, will start to look like for rural residents.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of things in, in terms of clarification with what is being proposed. We have included some potential programs that we are looking at with the seniors association. It doesn't mean that these programs will be, what will be provided forever and ever. This is what we're looking at as a starting point, but what we want to make sure is that there's flexibility to look at where other programming needs may be, and we have already started to have the conversation about the rural area, because we do recognize that there's a need. We do have some space limited, but looking at how we can also work with other community organizations, but the intent here is to provide the more financial flexibility for the seniors association to be able to work with, with the community to try to address those gaps.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all that staff have done to, to help the seniors center out and to enable more of this. Thank you.
Councilor Downs?
Thank you. Just along the same lines, there are many senior citizens who live in my constituency who don't have cars and tend to rely on public transit, so are there any plans to improve access to the, to the seniors center, not just from the rural area, but for seniors across the city with an improved transit system so that there's better access to the seniors, to the seniors' center?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, worship, the, the intent with this particular report and recommendation is to provide more financial flexibility to the seniors association so they can provide services in various areas of the city within...
I'll, I'll cut you off there. I was just kind of looking very quickly through the recommendations, and there really isn't an aspect of this recommendation that addresses the transit service directly, so therefore, it's not fair to ask that question of staff right now, but you can definitely follow up offline with staff for that. Anybody else on this? Councilor Hudson?
I'm not sure. I had a question, which followed on something that Councilor Scott said, which is his district, which is great, and it's fine, but I'm not sure we just rule this out of order. I'm just going by the first paragraph of the executive summary here that says that the seniors center located at six fifty-six Francis Street, and more recently at satellite locations around the city. I just want to ask, where?
Yeah, that's, that's fair. I was talking about the transit service.
So I just get an idea where they're branching out. That's my first question.
Commissioner?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The discussions that we have been having with the seniors association in terms of service provision at this point have focused mainly at the Invista Center and the Wally Elmer. Having said that, we recognize there are other areas, and I've noted earlier the rural area, which means that over time, there may be changes in the programming and location where that type of programming may be provided. The seniors association does provide services in other locations currently, and if you look at page thirty-nine of your package, which is page five of the report, there are a number of locations that are noted in, in the third paragraph, including YMCA and Emmer's View Community Hall, et cetera. So they do provide a number of services outside of that, but what we are trying to do is encourage more programming for seniors within city-owned facilities, and having the experts providing those services, which would be the seniors association.
Thank you, I, I appreciate those efforts. I didn't take these as being the recent ones, but I will now. The, my other question was, and like the other councillors, I'd like to say that I'm really happy to, to vote for this. I just wondered, in the first paragraph, it talks about reducing the interest rate and so on, which I don't object to. I was wondering if there was any, well, how much, the more, how much of the mortgage is left, and whether we looked at the possibility of mortgage retirement? When I was working with Martha's Table, we managed to get a fundraising, a capital fundraising campaign going, and the city contributed some portion of that, and the fact that the city contributed really loosened up a lot more funds, and that took it off their books. And I'm just wondering if that strategy was contemplated, and there may be reasons not, I'm just questioning, I'm just asking whether that strategy was contemplated.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The intent with the report, there, there's still a mortgage which was initially financed by the city, so there has been obviously interest being paid by the seniors association. That interest rate has changed over the years. It is now currently at five percent. Part of the recommendation that we have tonight is to reduce that interest rate to two percent, and to also put, if you wish, a, a down payment to reduce that mortgage by twenty-one thousand dollars, which are currently funds that we have in our capital programs for community centers. So the, the tools that we are trying to use with this report is actually not tools where we're providing funding directly to the association, but rather using internal tools where we can reduce their financial impact and payments in terms of their mortgage on a monthly basis.
Okay, I, I guess, did we have some financial philosoph- Okay, I guess, did we have some financial philosophical reason for not trying to retire the mortgage since we're giving up money in terms of the interest paid and the amount we contribute to, which I don't object to, but I'm just wondering if there, what the philosophy is behind these particular terms that are put into this agreement?
Are you, do you have the information to answer that question at this time, Counselor Hurdle, or Commissioner Hurdle?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can speak to, I think, the rationale for why this was established in the first place, obviously some time ago when it was purchased in 2000 and then 2001. Obviously, the purchase of the facility and the upgrades renovations were made for the purpose of the seniors association, and I think that's why it was structured that way through a loan process. The city did advance the funds for both the purchase and the renovations.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you very much. Just a quick comment, and the commissioner may choose to, to reflect and speak on it or not, but I know that one of the really positive things that I saw, and I know it's a different department and a different commissioner, but one of the really positive things I saw that came out of the, of the Cultural Master Plan was the concept of community cultural hubs. And this, the idea of being able to go beyond, to go beyond just the one site, indeed, would be exactly what that notion of community cultural hubs could, could accommodate. So I'm just wondering where we're at with trying to find a way to implement that portion of the Cultural Master Plan, and that may be a different commissioner that might want to speak to that. I also would like to point out that there are community cultural hubs, and I'll do a little pitch, as I always do, for the library. Our libraries are municipally funded. They have program space and indeed, I think, would be happy to work in collaboration, as they do with lots of community organizations, to have, to provide space for seniors programming. So if you could reflect or comment on that, that would be great.
Commissioner Beach.
So the cultural plan is a ten-year plan, and at this point, I don't have specific neighborhood cultural assets that we're working on, other than ones that you've already approved. So there's the Ted Center, we looked at the Harold Harvey Arena was one of the ones that we did look at as well, but we don't have any currently in our, our plan to add in terms of inventory. And obviously, from council's direction, are trying to look at control costs around not adding new facilities.
CIO Hunt.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Mayor. If I could, in addition to the, the sites mentioned by Commissioner Beach, there's certainly additional information and partnership work going on with respect to Wally Elmer, which was in the strategic plan for council, and some of the information that council has connecting with school boards and the library and all of that sort of thing. I think the, the fact that the review that was done with the seniors and seniors in the community last year and the next phase of implementation is a suggestion that more and more of these types of programs throughout the community in various locations are ways to build the community, and certainly that is part of the, the strategy that we all see regardless of which commissioner is dealing with those areas. And I think the last thing is that this again is evidence of partnership with this particular report where, as the seniors report and the strategy outlined, that it is about the community actually participating and delivering services together for the community, not just the city as, as a corporation and as a funding source providing services. So this is an example of how this, how we can work together and actually deliver more programs to, to the seniors population. So we're encouraged by all of these things coming together for the community as a whole.
Thank you. So I'll call the question on this. Please vote. Carries. The next report is Report sixty-two from the CIO.
It's moved by Counselor Hector, seconded by Counselor Osannick. The report number sixty-two from the Chief Administrative Officer, consider, be considered.
Yeah, so what we need to do is somebody move, because we have, it's Bell Park, and somebody move one of the two options, and then somebody second it. Counselor Downs, your, your hammer's up first.
Thank you, and, and the district council, so thank you very much for recognizing me. I'd like to move option two, please.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Hutchison. Just hold on a sec, please. There is an amendment, not an amendment, but yeah, I guess it's, there's, there was a, a wrong word in there, and we're just going to correct that. Commissioner Hurdle will speak to that, and then I'll go back to the motion. Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to point out that the option number two should read, remove, remove the solar energy option rather than the renewable energy option in order to be consistent with the rest of the report-
Okay.
-and the rest of the recommendation. Thank you.
So will council just accept, accept that as a procedural thing? Okay. So you're moving number two, Counselor Downs, and it's seconded by Counselor Hutchison. Counselor Downs, would you like to speak first as a mover?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, we've had, the tipping point, I believe, on this issue was when we had the public meeting at the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. And it was very clear that there, that there are a large number of our citizens who rely on the golf course to, to lead an act, a healthy and active life. And I think that as we, you know, we just discussed the seniors issue, and how are we to promote healthy and active living among a population that is getting older? And I strongly believe that the city has a role in that. And what's unique about Bell Park is that it's affordable. And I think the, the good that has come from this discussion, clearly with the Friends of Bell Park and, and other citizens of the, of the city, they're starting to think about it in a way that they didn't do before, because there was the potential of having it taken away from them. And I think, Your Worship, you know as well as I do that if you have something that you take for granted, and then all of a sudden, there's a threat that it's being taken away from you, you tend to appreciate it more. And I believe that this is what has happened in this debate with Bell Park. So I think some good has come of it. It's rallied the Friends of, of Bell Park. It has allowed those senior citizens who use it as affordable recreation a chance to stand up for the park in a way that they've, they've never done before. And I think that as citizens work with each other, and as the Friends of Bell Park start to do their good work, that we can have a recreational facility that's not just for golfers, but for everyone in the city to enjoy. And it was mentioned by the delegation tonight about the beautiful vistas on Bell Park. That's public, that's public property, and I think that we'll be able to, to keep that as, as a legacy for years to come if we choose not to turn it into an industrial site that is based on solar panels. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just, I just want to make sure that everybody stays on point here. So staff is bringing forward a report because they're basically saying, if you want to proceed with solar panels, you need to do it now because of a certain window of opportunity that exists. But what I would just want to make clear is that this really isn't a debate about whether or not Bell Park stays open. This is a debate about whether or not we proceed with that application. Ultimately, a successful application followed by a successful implementation would result in the park closing, so there's a little bit of discretion there. But I would just ask you to focus your comments on what this actual report is about. So Counselor Neal, you were next.
Thank you very much. I too attended the public meeting, and it, and there was overwhelming sentiment against losing this valuable parkland. Now, some of it had to do with golf, and, and the Friends of Bell Park, I know, are working hard to make the golf course a community viable operation, which I applaud them for. But I'm not going to talk about that aspect of it. What I'm going to talk about is the, the idea that we have a valuable community asset that's both a golf course but also passive green space. I was invited, as I know the mayor was, to go for a walk with, with our dogs and one of the, one of the community people-
Got my meat soaked that day.
-supporting, yeah, on a very rainy day. But it was an opportunity for us to see that the park is much more than just a golf course. And the idea of sacrificing any parkland in the community, any viable, well-used parkland to install solar energy, I think is very, very short-sighted. Having said that, I think we should invest in as many small-fit programs that we can on every publicly-owned roof that, that could accommodate it. I think we should find unused public utilities lands, whether they be along a, an electric line or whatever, and use that, those spaces, and maximize our, our commitment to sustainability and to solar energy. But I will not support losing one square meter of parkland when there are so many other options in the city that could support solar energy. So I, that's why I totally support the option that's been put forward.
Thank you. Counselor Berg?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I will be voting against option two. I don't think it comes as any surprise that after spending probably the last eighteen months working diligently with Counselor Scott and city staff and speaking with our provincial counterparts on this renewable energy file, that I in principle support solar energy, and I would like to see this, this opportunity maximized. So I would like to see us move forward with the opportunity to submit an application and, and see if we can make this work. I look at this as, as the possibility of being a demonstration project on a smaller scale than what is proposed for Countryside District where there are many, many, many acres currently going through the process, the provincial process, to be implemented. I like the idea of having a significant ground-mounted solar project within reach for students of all ages across our community to study in a very practical scale all of the implications of a ground-mounted solar farm project. We can look at impacts to, to water and source water protection, habitat fragmentation, fire suppression, all of those concerns that we've been studying for the last eighteen months. We will have them right here, and we will have the benefit of having easy access to them for, as I said, not just those students, secondary students who are studying them at our three institutions in town, but all of the, the other people who are younger and/or older who are interested in this sort of project. I tip my hat to the counselors of the day in the early seventies who had a creative solution to take a landfill site and find a way of turning that, that space into something that would pay the bills and provide park space, access space, walking space, golf space, to Kingstonians. It's been around now for several decades, greater than several decades, and I think it is important to us to look at other options of how we can increase the value and the access of this municipal asset. So I won't be supporting this, and I will support the possibility of moving forward with a solar application. Thank you.
Counselor Osannick.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do support this motion. It was just mentioned from past counselors, but what really won me over in, you know, getting the solar panels out of Bell Park was the public meeting, and it was the dedication that we saw of the people that went to that public meeting. It was a very, very bad ice storm that night. I got to Portsmouth Olympic Harbor, and there were 100 people inside the room, standing room only. We can't pack that many people into a public meeting on a nice, warm, pleasant night offering cookies and coffee. Like, it was just, it was packed, standing room only, and everyone spoke, you know, to, you know, keep Bell Park as a park, and, and how can you argue that? You know, like, the, the public had spoken at that meeting. Also, too, another point is that in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and again mentioned in the Harmonization of Parkland Dedication Bylaw that we debated at Planning Committee most recently, is that the city needs to acquire 76 more acres of parkland to get the ratio of parkland per capita to what it should be at compared to other municipalities in the province. So if we're here giving up any acreage at Bell Park, you know, for the solar panel project, whether it's like the 10 acres, the 20 acres, or the 30 acres, we're just swapping one green project for another. How are we going to get ahead? We saw in our city council accomplishments of 2012, the entire year, all we did was acquire 9.84 acres of parkland. The entire year, we just got our parkland up by 9.84 acres. And here with Bell Park, we could be giving more than that away. How are we ever going to get ahead? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I say this as respectfully as I can, because I know that there are people in our community that have come out and have advocated very strongly for the status quo at Bell Park. And they have spoken against the idea of pursuing a solar energy option on the property. But respectfully, while 100 people has given that voice, we have heard from thousands in our community that are concerned about tax increases. And as council, we have responded by saying that we are going to limit tax increases. And our staff have told us that in order to do that, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. We're going to have to explore some trade-offs. We're going to have to find somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.4 million dollars in savings or whatever that is. So we have to think outside the box. We have to weigh trade-offs. And this, in my view, is basic kitchen-table economics that every family understands, that you have to sit down sometimes and you have to make some choices. This seems to be being portrayed as though the option is to convert all of Bell Park into solar panels. But that's not what we're talking about. We have 86 acres, and we're just talking about the option of maybe taking 10 acres of that, maybe 20, and using that as a revenue source to bring in millions of dollars into the city over the coming years so that we will have money to pour into acquiring more parkland, so we have money to be able to pour into improving the waterfront of the inner harbor that we have talked about as a council wanting to improve. Yes, it's true that one of our strategic priorities is, has to do with green spaces, but sometimes it's not always about quantity. Sometimes there is this aspect of quality, to say, well, if we sacrifice a little bit on the quantity, we can do so much more on the quality. And I think if we take that big-picture view, I think that this is- this is a trade-off that is at least worth exploring. You saw in the previous report just a few minutes ago, that because of the sound financial management of our city staff, that we put 2.5 million dollars into our working fund reserve. And now we have the option of taking 140,000 of that to investigate, to work towards the option of being able to bring in millions of dollars that will then not have to come from the taxpayers in the city. And I just think that that's an option worth exploring. So, unfortunately, I can't support option two, but I will support option one. Thank you.
Councilor Schell?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I too went to the public meeting and a number of items were brought up. One, one in particular was that this is a piece of waterfront. And we have decided long ago that we do not sell our own waterfront because it's such a valuable asset. We also have heard a comment that we would keep status quo with this option, but I think we've seen that there's been a huge rallying of citizens who want to become involved. The status quo would not remain. Another major point for me is that this is an area of brown field, particularly to the south. And there have been discussions by many people, a developer very recently who was going to try to work on the Davis Tannery, and we all hope that that will happen with brown fields as time goes by. And I do think that if we have a solar farm beside what we hope is going to become very high-end housing, we're defeating ourselves. I think there's quite a deep consensus that I can feel in this council that this, we would look at fit programs, just not on the waterfront, on a piece of parkland. And it's unfortunate that it became concentrated on this waterfront park instead of looking at and giving direction to staff to do this sort of activity on another brown field in the background, somewhere else. Because I don't think anyone here is against the idea of solar, just certainly for me, it's not on the waterfront, not in a park, and not right beside an area that we hope to turn into high-end housing. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. As Councilor Berg said, I'm very much familiar with solar panels. I've seen solar panel projects which are at the smallest here, 20 times just for, the size of it just for one project, and in fact, 234 times size, enormous projects that have absolutely no relation to the community they're in. So, looking at the sizes of these, these are small projects. And considering the topography on this site, being a flat, former garbage dump through the middle of the site, I don't see any reason why a project couldn't go in there. It's very easy to hide solar panels. We set a 20-meter buffer in our guidelines, and I think we could easily meet that here and hide them in the middle of this site quite easily. We've heard that the property is very hard to maintain for a golf course. We can't irrigate it, can't change it because of the, the toxins, et cetera. But the periphery around the edge of this site is quite nice. And as Councilor Patterson said, 86 acres, even at the most, with a 30-acre solar site, we'd still be 56 acres here, which is huge. So, I'm not too, also as far as golf courses, the city of Kingston is a big place and we have five golf courses in the city of Kingston outside of here. And it's not like we're losing all of our golf courses. We're going to have to pay for this redevelopment of this site, and an awful lot of money has gone in, into the inner city in the last few years. And I don't know how we're going to pay for this. And quite simply, this is a really good way of getting some revenue and actually starting to pay for the redevelopment of this site, keeping the waterfront all the way around the edge for trails and actually get some tree plantings, et cetera, and make it a much nicer park. So, I won't support this motion, but I will be supporting motion one. Thank you.
Councilor Hutchison?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think one of the problems with the situation here is it's really rather either-or. The problem, if you give up a park, is you're never going to get it back. And we, as we heard, we're short of green space. I'm pro-solar. I'm fine. I've had a hand in, in developing solar energy and I support it. But as was pointed out, I think we have many other opportunities available, but not in a park space. Also, one of the problems is that what we're given here in this report is that the solars, the sighting of the solar project goes right in the middle of the golf course. So, if you develop solar, goodbye golf course. That seems really rather black and white to me. And unfortunately, to me, we're being presented with a black and white option. So, I'm tending to support the one that, that, that supports the, the retention of the, of the green space, of the park space, and the waterfront space, which is really hard to come by. And I also think there are technical issues to do with setbacks and the land stability that really haven't been looked at in detail and may scuttle the whole thing before we're done. And for that reason, given the choices that are in front of us, I think the best one, at least for the time being, is part two that says we will not send the application. We will not prepare the application, and that's how I'll be voting. Thank you.
Would anybody else, Councilor Glover?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I think at the end of the day, this becomes a question of stewardship. And what sort of stewards we want to be, the resources that we have, and what sort of stewards we want to be for tomorrow. Putting a solar farm in Bell Park is irreversible. The point has been made about parks. We don't have enough of them. We need more of them. The point has been made that solar can go anywhere. It doesn't have to go in a waterfront park. I was part of the council that bought additional land for Grass Creek Park. We weren't buying it for a solar farm, and I wouldn't support a solar farm there. I was part of the council that supported the improvements to Lake Ontario Park. I wouldn't support a solar farm there. The work that has been done, that we've been told about, if it was done competently, must surely be transferable because you're doing the basic work on systems and what you're looking for and what you're not looking for. And a large part of that work must be transferable so it is not lost. With respect to the revenues from the solar farm, when I look in pages 54 and 55 of the package, I don't see millions of dollars coming in, and I see estimated nets. And I think we should all take those with a degree of caution after experience with other revenue projections that councils have seen. With respect to the costs of the golf course, yes, at one time when it was being ignored, it may well have been a place where it was perceived to be losing money. But we've heard from the Friends of the Bell Park about how they are willing to spend more money, they're willing to volunteer. I'm certainly getting the sense from staff last time this came forward, that costs on the Bell Park side were definitely coming in control. So, it's not a matter of trying to reduce the, the tax rate next year by closing off a sinkhole of red at Bell Park. But I do suspect that by the time, as Councilor Hutchison suggested, the engineering issues have been looked at, putting in your floating concrete pads or whatever they are on top of contaminated land, it's probably going to wind up being an awful lot more expensive. So, our net revenues are probably going to take a little bit longer to pay off the costs. So, it comes back to what sort of stewards do we want to be and how do we want to be remembered? Do we want to be remembered as the people who turned over waterfront for, for a solar farm? Do we want to be remembered as people who turned our back on looking at realistic industrial sites for solar farms and took the easy option of taking parkland from our North End community? If we want to be short-sighted, go with option one. If you want to be responsible stewards, thinking with a long-term vision, go with option two.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
I will attempt to make a perhaps more rational argument than some of the ones that I've heard. About two years ago, if not longer, the CAO and I were having breakfast, I believe it was in the Jiffy Grill at the Kingston Center, that's where we usually meet. And we were talking about Bell Park and at some point, some, the CAO said, we talked about what could be done there. I don't know if it was a CAO or I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but one of us started talking about, well, what else could be done there? And I think the CAO said, "Well, what about a solar panel thing?" And then, at a strategic planning meeting to follow shortly thereafter, I then said, I made the comment of, "Well, I heard that, you know, maybe we could do this." Rick Sandard was in the room and the rest is history. And we know where a lot of this came to. But my point is, is that I was never married to this idea of solar panels at Bell Park. I always thought, "Yeah, it's a good idea to explore and just kind of find out what, what could possibly, what could be done there." So, in part of my consulting with the public, and that happens in many different ways, I conducted for the last couple of months a poll on Facebook, which I respect. Not everybody uses Facebook, not everybody uses Twitter, but not everybody emails and not everybody phones, and I still get handwritten letters that come to my office. So, respect the fact that there are many different ways that constituents communicate with us. I asked a series of questions and one question was, "Do you think Bell Park should remain as a golf course?" And 56% said no, 44% said yes. But the more important question that pertains to the solar panels is, one of my questions was, "If we didn't keep it as a golf course, do you think," and there were 262 respondents. And I asked, "If we didn't keep it as a golf course, do you think we should," there was a few different options. One was have a full-scale, full-scale-blown solar panel production facility, yada, 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 the industrial site we're talking about, of which only 17 individuals, or 6% said yes. 43%, or 113 of the people that commented, said, "We should have something that is part solar panel, part recreational trails, a hybrid model of it." And 39% said, "Convert the space only into walking trails and nothing for, nothing in terms of solar panels." And then the remainder had other suggestions. So, based on the information that I've collected, based on an idea that just popped in my head, or in our heads, kind of like the one we'll talk about perhaps in a little while, I am totally okay with saying, "No, I don't want to go ahead and spend 140,000 dollars to do this." I recognize the fact that not everybody likes it. I think that there's been some pretty good arguments around the table about the waterfront property aspect of it, about it being a park. But I will say that I'm not convinced that it needs to stay open as a golf course at this point. But at this point, I'm, it's, I'm, it's safe for me to say, "I'm willing to take the solar panel option off the table." So, I will vote in favor of option two that has been put forward. Thank you.
I'll return the chair to you.
Would anybody else like to speak before I allow the mover to speak last? Councilor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with much that has been said in support of this particular recommendation. I can recall many years ago, our previous council where we were provided with, and I'm going to ask staff if maybe we could get an update, we were provided with a list of all the land holdings that the city presently had. And I know that we have been dealing with land banking for affordable housing, so if we could exclude those properties. But I think it would be of interest to members of council if we could get that updated and have a look to see if there are properties that would, that would be far better suited than Bell Park for renewable energy. And, and that we could, as a council, make some type of decision and give direction to, to staff to look at these specific sites rather than Bell Park. Because I've, I've listened to and I've been reading the emails Mr. Dixon and others have, have brought to our attention. And I think that, you know, this organization, the Friends of Bell Park, that's now, you know, become, become an entity in municipality, they, you know, they have some great ideas and I think some means by which they can help bring down the subsidy that we, as a city, currently put into this, as we do many facilities in the city of Kingston, which are for the benefit of all the residents. And it's just something that we do for the betterment of the community as a whole. So, I'm going to support the, the recommendations before us now, but I think that we should continue to pursue the option of renewable energy. Just, we need to address where that, that location should be and something that we, as a council as a whole, can support.
Deputy Mayor Hector?
Thank you, Worship. I've been to some really interesting green spaces, which are very large, such as Bell Park, in communities in various parts of the, of the world. And one of the parks that, that I thought was really interesting was one that integrated, it was also a landfill, such as Bell Park. And it integrated renewable energy projects for the community. And the community had paths in and around all the renewable energy pieces and, and interacted with it. And they didn't seem to have too much trouble with it. It was a way of paying for the trails that they were walking on, a way for paying for the grooming of the, of the grass and the trees and the, paid for the benches and the, and the play structures and anything else that was, was in those parks. And, and they recognized because of the way it was done, and I think that's where this, this particular project has, has gone astray. And it, and it's because it became a gut-wrenching, "Oh, my God, we're going to lose Bell Park" because of a stray comment. And it's unfortunate because that's not the way you build communities. But if you want to build a community that's going to learn about interactive renewable energies, learn about its green space, have the opportunities, like, like we heard a lot of what Councilor Berg said, and have some of the schools that are in the area be able to walk out and see renewable energy, I don't see that as a problem. I see that as an innovative community. However, as this has evolved, there has been some movement in terms of, of, of the community itself realizing that they can't have everything for nothing. And I think that's a good valuable lesson, and it's also a good thing to encourage. And to encourage people to be involved in their community in a way that brings revenue to the community so that we don't have to tax you to be able to build you a trail. We don't have to tax you to be able to ensure you have the green spaces in, on the waterfront. Because you have an investment in terms of your, the capital you bring, the human capital, that brings to the project in order to help the community, not have to tax you to do it, but because you're bringing effort and time. Now, do I believe that this should be a golf course? Absolutely not. I don't believe the city should be in the business of doing golf courses. I think we should be in the business of providing a quality of life and spaces that our, our community wants and values, but ensure that we're in the core businesses which our community require, which is to ensure that our infrastructure works and that our buildings work. But I also want to ensure that we, we build a community where the community wants to be involved, wants to be part of making their spaces their, their spaces, as opposed to saying, "What can you do for us, city government?" It's more like, "We can do this and we'd like to do this. Will you help us do this?" And in this case, I actually think that's something that should be rewarded and given an opportunity. But hear me, we need revenue in order to be able to pay it. We need revenue in order to be able to support those efforts. And we need the community to understand that it can't be, "Please give us this so we can go do that." It's more, "What can I do for my community?" It's more, what can I do for my community, because my community needs me? So what can you do for your community, because it needs you to be able to support things like Bell Park, Lake Ontario Park, and those sorts of activities? So I support this, because it's the way, I think, to give some an opportunity, to show what they can do, and to maybe instill that kind of citizenship around the rest of the city. Thank you.
Counselor Ritzel?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I feel pardon the expression, sometimes it's worth waking a sleeping dog. And I think with all the attention that Bell Park had, I think that's what we've done. And I think it was a necessary discussion to have, and I've listened to a lot of people, a lot of different arguments, even before we got to council and talked about this. And sometimes I have a hard time arguing for or against Bell Park, but one of the most imposing questions that was given to me was one, and it's one I kind of agree with at this point, let's see what the Friends of Bell Park can do with the course, if, if they're, they have that much passion for it, let's see what they can do, and perhaps down the road, they can run it as a revenue-neutral operation, rather than receiving money from the city. But, the other, the other question that was handed to me by a number of constituents was, if we're going to spend eight and a half or nine million dollars on a pool, who says the city has to be in the pool business?
We're definitely not talking about pools right now.
No, I know, I know that, your worship. Yeah. And, and there's other things, like, how much do we spend on different things around the city, i.e. the Grand Theater? I asked that question earlier tonight. So those are the questions that were asked of me, so, at this point, I don't want to take anything off the table, there's always opportunities to do things with Bell Park down the road, if the Friends of Bell Park and other associations that come together, whether it's for trails, et cetera, et cetera, if those things don't prove to be fruitful, then we always have the option of doing something else with Bell Park. So, I'm going to vote in favor of the, the second option this evening. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak before I allow the mover to speak last? Counselor Downs, would you like to speak last?
Yes, thank you.
Please go ahead.
I just, I guess I don't, I don't appear trite, but the question that came into my head when I was listening to the debate was, how about if it was a park in your district? And I think as it's, you know, and we're talking about how members of council have to, have to look at the big picture, we've heard that earlier tonight, how we look at the big picture to make sensible decisions for the city. And, you know, if it was Jim Beatty Park, if it was Grass Creek Park, if it was the Memorial Center, there would be issues of public concern to putting solar panels on those sites. The, Bell Park serves a constituency in the North End, a lot of whom don't have cars, it's accessible by public transit, it's accessible to senior citizens who can practice a healthy, active, and affordable game of golf, where you can have a, play nine holes of golf, and walk across the Legion to have a beer and a sandwich for about twenty-five bucks. And that's not the other five golf courses in the city. I beg to differ, that's Bell Park, though. So, I think what we're, I think what I'm hearing in the debate is this corporate view of what the city is, and the public view of what the city is. And the corporate view looks at everything we own as assets where we maximize revenue. And the other side looks at it as assets for the good of the citizenry of Kingston. And I strongly believe that when the comment is made that you can't have everything for nothing, well, the people in my district who use the park, not just my district, but in, in that area who use the park, they pay taxes, and they expect to have services for the taxes that they pay. So I would encourage everyone to, to look at the, the point of view where what we do as a council is to represent our citizens. Our citizens have needs, the, the need to recreate is a, is a function of being a human being, and anyone with young kids knows that. I appreciate that more as a, as a former teacher, where I just saw kids at recess, and I, it's not corny, it's not a corny argument, it's a true argument. Our citizens, especially our young and our very old, need places to recreate. So, the place has value now, the value doesn't need to be increased, it is a valuable property, it's used by the, by the folks of Kingston, and I really hope that, you know, the other thing I want to say is that I went to all the, all the staff meetings and the public meetings for the redevelopment of Grass Creek Park, and that's, that's not anywhere near where my district is, but I just think it's important enough that all citizens have the benefits of, of good parkland. So I, I think that, I am thinking of the big picture, I'm not trying to just be narrow and parochial here, although some of what I said was narrow and parochial. But I really think that we need to look at it in a different way. It's not just a dump, it's a golf course, it's trails, it's a place where you can walk your dog, and it's a place where you can play nine rounds of golf, and cross over Montreal Street to the Legion, and have a beer and a sandwich for under twenty-five bucks, and there's value for you right there.
Okay, I think that's it. So, I'll call the question on this. So, just so there's no confusion, what we're voting on is option two, which is that we do not proceed with the solar option. If it loses, then somebody can introduce option one. That carries. Okay, next we have report sixty-three from the Planning Committee. Is this?
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to present report number sixty-three from the Planning Committee, and I said it would be received and adopted.
Right, so we're going to separate item three, there are three items, we're going to separate number three for Counselor George's pecuniary interests, so, does anybody want to separate any of the other two, items one or two?
It's moved by Counsel Patterson, seconded by Counsel Berg, that report number sixty-three from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Like I said, does anybody want to separate one or two? So we'll vote on one and two together, I'll call the question on numbers one and two, please. That carries. Item three, Counselor George, did you swipe out? You did, okay. So, I'll call the question. Next we have report sixty-four from the Heritage Committee.
Mayor Garretson, it's my pleasure to present to council the report, the regular monthly meeting of the Heritage Committee that was held at the start of this month.
Moved by Counsel Glover, seconded by Counsel Schell, that report number sixty-four from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
So, we have a number of clauses on that, they'll be voted on together, I'll, would anybody like to speak to any of them, or separate any of them? I'll call the question on that, then. Carries. Report sixty-five from the Rural Advisory Committee.
Mayor Garretson, please present report sixty-five from the Rural Advisory Committee for approval and adoption by council.
It's moved by Counsel Ritzel, seconded by Counsel Scott, that report number sixty-five of the Rural Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Would anybody like to speak, yes, Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. The council gave direction to the Rural Advisory Committee to look at the Enbridge Pipeline Nine B reversal in relation to risk to rural groundwater, and the committee met and discussed with some of the public and amongst themselves, and compiled fourteen different questions that will also, that will be added to the four questions that Keith put together, and all of these will be taken forward to Enbridge and the NEB. Thank you.
Called a question on that? That carries. Were we, there's only twelve, oh, Counsel Downs, I, I didn't see that. Next is report sixty-six from Heritage Committee.
Mayor Garretson, it's my pleasure to present to council one motion coming forward from the special meeting that the Heritage Committee had yesterday for considering grant applications, et cetera. This is coming forward this evening because it's time-sensitive, it's with respect to a plaque which would be presented to us by the Princess of Wales Own Regiment on the occasion of the celebration of their hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, which is the fourth of May, before the next meeting of council. But you're not going to be a hundred-and-fifty.
Moved by Counsel Glover, seconded by Counsel Schell, that report number sixty-six of the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
If there's no question, then I will call to question. Please, please vote. That carries. Committee the whole, we have nothing, information reports, are there any questions on any of them? All right, I'll move to miscellaneous business, will somebody move the first one? Counsel Patterson and Counsel Schell will second it, that, with the request of Stephen Hartley, Kingston Pride, council approve the request that the pride flag be flown in Confederation Park, June first to the thirtieth of this year. Called a question? We're still waiting on one person. Still one up there. That carries. Will somebody move the second one? Counsel, Deputy Mayor Hector and Counsel Glover, that the resignation of John Carpenter, representative from St. Lawrence Student Association, near campus neighborhoods advisory committee be received with regret? Called a question? That carries. Will somebody move three? Counsel Schell, Counsel George, that the resignation of Jayren Yu from Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum, Keith, be received with regret? I'll call the question. Carries. Will somebody move the last one? Deputy Mayor Hector and Counsel Ritzel, that as requested by Remy's Shriners, council approve the request to proclaim June sixth to June ninth as Remy's Spring Ceremonial in the city of Kingston. Called a question? New motions, we've already dealt with the first one. The second one, I'll turn the chair to Deputy Mayor Hector to run the meeting.
I have the chair.
Pardon me?
I have the chair.
Okay.
Does anybody wish to speak?
Are you going to read it?
No.
Or at least just the therefore clause in it?
Moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Counsel Hutchison, therefore be resolved that council directs staff to put together feasibility and action plan for the stabilization and restoration of the building at Nine North Street, and that this plan include the exploration of a partnership with the Building Construction Internship Program with the Limestone District School Board for the purpose of providing a learning and mentorship experience for local students. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I recognize Mayor Garretson.
Just to, in case there are any questions, Counselor Hutchison and I have met on a couple of occasions with some members of the community that are interested in doing something with Nine North Street. I think that my sense is around council, there's probably, there, the consensus that something has to be done here, but nobody's ever really known the first step to take with respect to this. We, through discussions, came up with the idea with some of the community partners that we see if we can include the Building Construction Internship Program, which is run by the Limestone District School Board, to see if we can get some of the students involved in this, so that it becomes a community-based type idea in terms of the restoration. Of course, the way that their program works is that everything's always run by a contractor, and that the students are responsible to the contractor, so that at the end of the day, somebody is responsible. This particular program does many different building projects for the city, primarily residential, they are excited to explore the possibility of this idea with the city, because it's different than the traditional thing that they do. But to give you an example, they were involved in the restoration of the tourism office across the street from City Hall here, when that was restored a few years ago, so, they, they do have a lot of experience in working with different community partners. So I'll leave it at, at that. Thank you. I'm not the chair.
Counsel Neil, and then Counselor Hutchison.
I applaud this motion, it's an excellent initiative. I do believe that that's a program that, over a number of years, has been at QECVI, and they do, it's, it's an excellent project, an excellent program, and it's one of the merits, and one of the things that QECVI can be very proud of. Thank you.
Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, let me give credit to the mayor for facilitating this. As a graduate of this particular program, he knew well what's possible. I was there, my, my son also has graduated with this program, but I think that both were several years ago, so, it's, it's not really the point. The point is that this program happens to dovetail with the needs of this particular building, and the mayor recognized that. And I wanted to credit for that to him. The, this Nine North Street has been a really difficult issue for a number of counselors, because it's recognized as a worthwhile heritage building, but it has poor condition, and it's been getting worse. And that's what makes this relatively inexpensive first step so worthwhile. And perhaps this will be the first step to actually saving and restoring this heritage building, which would be a credit to us and all the councils that have tried to deal with this. There've been a number of proposals for usage of this building, I've been approached individually, the mayor has been, I'm sure, and we, we dealt with one, and I won't go into it, because I don't know where we're going on this, but, you know, we, there's a possibility of people be involved, private sector, not-for-profit sector, and people that want to invest in it, and, you know... it, and, you know, I know local motive ten ninety-five, you know, it did cost us a lot of money, but nothing like it would have cost if we'd just done it, and because of the amount of labor that was put in by the, by the trade unions. And I'm hoping that perhaps we'll get a really, also get a really good result from this. And so, I encourage you to vote for this motion. Thanks very much.
I had put myself on the list, and then I'll put Counsel Glover. Question to Commissioner Legay. Is this building not a significant brownfield, and has, at one time, did we not have an estimate of over a million dollars required to repair this building?
Through you, Madam Chair. The information that had been presented to council, and the council had received back in two thousand and six, commissioned by our heritage staff, indicated at that time you'd probably need four hundred thousand dollars at that time, and those dollars circa two thousand and four, just to do the stabilization piece. And a million dollars to reconfigure. Those estimates have changed, and they significantly changed. But one of the biggest unresolved issues and uncertainties is certainly the brownfields issue, and the soil, the level of soil and building contamination that's not been assessed yet.
When you say that it's changed, what, what do you mean? It's changed for the better or for the worse in terms of costs?
You're thrown off by the green light and the red light. Through you, Madam Chair. It depends on what the ultimate purpose of this building would be in terms of reconfiguration costs. We know now that stabilization costs would be in the magnitude of seven to eight hundred thousand dollars, and depending on the purpose and the repurposing of the facility, and whether or not there'd be one floor, two floors, and site conditions, we've been given estimates that range anywhere from three and a half to five million dollars.
So, what, what has held us up from moving forward? Is it because of what possible uses as a brownfield that this building would permit? And what are those uses?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I think it's not, in terms of what's prevented us to move forward on this issue, is that the city has many priorities as it relates to buildings, and our focus has been on buildings where we provide services, buildings that are needed to deliver municipal services. So, we haven't certainly focused with the scarcity of resources and competing priorities in buildings that are not in current use. We've done some minor modifications to buildings such as Warpin House in terms of some of the issues there. We've, in terms of this building specifically, I think all we've done so far is we've rendered the site safe through hoarding and fencing, and we've done a bit of plywood work on the roof to arrest deterioration, so that the masonry didn't get further compromised until such time as council decided what they wanted to do with the building.
Thank you. I will refrain from making comments because I won't pass the chair on again, but Counsel Glover.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to see this come before us, and I think our colleagues, Sir Hutchison, who have been moving this forward, should be commended. I must confess that all the time I've been working on it, clearly I've been at the wrong end of the stick, because I was trying to work with a potential user, several potential users over time, and they ultimately were all defeated by the costs of trying to rehabilitate the building. And this idea of using the, the building as a training site, I think is tremendous. It's thinking outside the box, something we're all encouraged to do, and it gets an important start on what we can do with a very important industrial nineteenth-century building by one of the premier architects of Kingston of, of the day, William, William Newlands. And in direct answer to your question, Madam Chair, what were the problems that nothing happened? One of it is the size of the building, because many commercial ventures these days either want something significantly smaller or significantly larger, and this in a sense is, is a bit of an awkward size. With respect to the outcome that we might expect downstream, if the walls are stabilized and a proper roof is put on, that's a tremendous step forward. Those of you that know the building might think, oh, my gosh, but I would encourage you to remember an item in the Heritage Committee report, which we've just approved from the regular meeting, the intent to designate a farmhouse on Highway Two. That was a ruin by fire, and the roof had collapsed, the walls weren't stable. I, I just flipped through. We have the photographs of its current condition in the heritage package from, from the beginning of the month, and they're not in our package here. But it was bought, in fact, by the vice chair of the Heritage Committee, and he has very carefully restored it, and it is now a tremendous building. And that is an example of the sort of transportation we might hope to see with, with, with Nine North Street. It's a tremendous project, happy to support it. Thank you.
Counsel Burke.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you, I have two questions, and I'm, hope that they aren't a little too awkward for staff. So, my first question would be, if staff could speculate on whether or not there would be a cost to engaging in this discussion with the building internship program? In light of the fact that we've already heard that there are some obvious challenges to this site with respect to it being a brownfield and such, is there any significant cost to at least having the conversation?
Mr. Legay.
If I can answer, I don't know if I've completely got in my head around the question, but in terms of explore, exploring with this internship program, as the mayor has indicated, what we'd have to do is try to assess whether or not there's a contractor out there if council were to proceed with any kind of stabilization work and/or remediation work that is willing to assume the risks on this kind of property. I think we'd have to explore that further.
Thank you. And my second question would be similarly obtuse, I suppose. Would there be, do staff think that there might be any liability to us in having students on the site with it having its obvious challenges of being a brownfield?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think my previous answer attempts to answer that question as well, is that if we, if council were deciding to proceed, and we were exploring, and there was feasibility, and the contractor assuming the risk, then we would look to structure something that would absolve us or limit our risks.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the moment. Question about the feasibility study, I presume you wouldn't preclude discussing this happening over, say, five years with QECBI. If it's going to be a training ground, and there is, even though there would be discussion of costs, I presume you could be, that would be part of the discussion. What timeframe the students could be working on this building?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure at this point in time. I think that, you know, part of a feasibility and action plan, I think, as I understand the motion as it's being presented, would include, you know, in terms of costs, bringing back information related to costs, how we might go about doing it, including all of the options, including timelines, and that would be all part of the plan. So, it's kind of difficult to speculate this time.
Who is the, the mayor wants to speak last to his motion. Who is the last deputy mayor? Counsel Ritzel, would you take the chair, please?
I have the chair and recognize you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I only asked questions last time, so I wanted to make a comment now. And it's, and it is that, reality is, this is going to cost an awful lot of money at the end of the day, for a building that even Counsel Glover couldn't find someone who had a purpose for it because of its awkward size and location. I'm all right with the going ahead for the feasibility, but eight hundred thousand dollars just to stabilize, and then you're talking five million, and if you've ever gone to walk the site, it's a very small building. And five million dollars going to a very small building, a building the size, well, maybe the size of this horseshoe. So, I just caution council in, in this, this particular road we're going down, because this motion doesn't have a financial limitation on it. It's an open-door motion. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair to you, Madam Deputy Chair.
Thanks. I'll take the chair back. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before? Mayor Garretson speaks last to the motion. Thanks. Mayor Garretson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I just want to say that one of the problems here is that it's, the building is not stabilized. You cannot walk in that building right now. It's barricaded off with fence and whatever. Here we are, out there, trying to point the finger at CN, telling them what they should be doing on Montreal Street, and we're not even doing it to a building that we own. So, I think the reason why we've never been able to move forward with this is because, like Counsel Glover said, there was never really a purpose for it. So, that was the whole point to trying to get the learning experience into it, was that that could become part of the purpose. I mean, we're history, we're a municipality that has such rich history in terms of the heritage restoration that goes on in, in this city. Well, why not start training the generations that are going to be doing that on a municipal building? So, I mean, I think we have an obligation to stabilize it at the very least anyways, and then after that, I think we even have an obligation to start to restore it. The good news is, and I shouldn't, I won't name names because the individual didn't, I didn't ask the individual if I could, and it doesn't really mean anything other than there is interest out there. I got a phone call today from a developer who we see around this council every once in a while, and inquiring about the fact that this was on the agenda, and that, you know, what's this all about? And I basically just said, if it passes, then you can talk to staff about it later on and explore the opportunity. So, that doesn't mean anything in terms of something happening, but at least to me, it's showing me that, hey, there is interest out there, and there is, there are people that are willing to work, to look at this. So, at the very least, the worst-case scenario, staff comes back and says, this is going to cost a whole lot of money, it poses all these challenges, and then we're just back to where we are. And, and my anticipation with the entire, the plan would also start to address some of those needs as to what would the building be used for. I mean, we're not going to rent it, refurbish a building without knowing, having an idea of what the intent of the building is going to be. So, that, that's part of the plan, and in, when I put together the motion. So, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I call the question. It's passed, and I return the chair to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any notices of motion to present? We, the minutes are not ready, so we're just going to jump over that. They'll, that'll be brought forward at the next meeting. Tabling of documents, there are three documents to be tabled, number of communication items. Is there any other business? Yes, Counselor Hector, or Deputy Mayor Hector first?
Thank you, worship. I wish to apologize to council. I wish to apologize to the mayor. I lost a bet. The Kingston V's lost in double overtime to Newmarket, and Counselor Chris Emanuel of Newmarket, who I sit on the FCM board, has demanded that I say the following, so I quote, "Newmarket is the tenth-best city in Canada, ahead of Kingston," unquote. Go V's, and Kingston's the second-best place to retire in Canada." Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neil.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question for clarification, because I know that there's an issue that's about to come forward. I know that you mentioned that there are several municipalities that indeed have an even number of counselors, and I wasn't able to find one that was, but you mentioned that there were several that you were aware of. Could you mention?
No, unfortunately, Counsel Neil, this is not the time to be asking each other questions. This is to raise other business. If you have any other business, now would be the time to raise it, but. Anybody else? Okay, so now we'll move into the bylaws.
So, we're, I'm going to deal with bylaw six first, because Counselor George has declared a peccoonary. We're going to actually do bylaws, the readings first and second, and then the third reading in two motions, but at once, so that Counselor George doesn't have to sign in and sign out.
I imagine that there is at least one individual sitting at this table that would like to separate bylaw seven. Is that correct? Okay, so we're going to separate bylaw seven as well?
So, we're going to do bylaw six first. So, it's moved by Counselor Ritzel, seconded by Counsel Patterson, that bylaw six be given its first and second reading.
We'll vote on this. So, that carries. Can he come back in now?
We're going to do the third reading. Moved by Counsel Burke, seconded by Counsel Downs, that bylaw six be given its third reading.
Please vote. Did everybody vote? We're missing one. Just vote, vote again if you don't mind, please. Counselor? Still missing one person. There. Whoever just hit it. Carries.
Seconded by Counsel Patterson, that bylaws one through five and sixteen be given its first and second reading.
One through five and sixteen, okay. Please vote. Carries.
So, now into bylaw seven. So, it's moved by Counsel Burke, seconded by Counsel Downs. So, moved by Counsel Burke, seconded by Counsel Shell, that bylaw seven be given its third reading.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. We've been dealing with this issue for quite some time, and we've learned many, many different things about the city through this process. There's been many changes to the city since amalgamation. The overall city population has increased by about eleven thousand. The overall city population has increased by about 11,000 people, and the downtown has actually dropped by about 5,000 people, and that 5,000 people has shown up in the suburbs. So, we've shown a serious shift in population in the city, which has brought us to the option one, which says removal of one district downtown and the creation of a new one in the suburbs. Now, we have this problem with the students and how to look at them within the community, and we've heard many different things. So, my observations is we have about 6,500 post-secondary students who live in residence. We have many who live in, in the community, in rental space. We have about 4,500 students who have changed their addresses to Kingston and now live here as citizens. And then there are the students who, or live in the Kingston area, who actually go to their local university or college. Now, with this complication, councillor, Mayor Garretson and I, we're looking at a alternative way of accounting the students and giving them some kind of recognition in council, in a way that would take away the complications of district representation, and would include all RMC, St. Lawrence, and Queen's University students. And we'd put together a bylaw.
Point of order.
Yes.
The councillor is not addressing the motion that's on the floor. He's addressing something else. I don't know what he's talking about, it's not related to the motion that's on the floor.
Councillor Scott has so far been talking about the bylaw, and then said he wants to move an amendment, and then that's when you raise a point of order. It's, everything he's said so far is in order.
So, everything he has said about the proposal that you and he has put together is germane to the debate? Is that your ruling?
I think that he's giving prelude to what he's about to do, what he's about to move. He said, he said, "So, we talked about putting an amendment, and then you..."
Okay, I understand. So, is he going to let everybody else speak before he defers it?
It's not his choice to let everybody else speak. If he brings forward a motion to defer, which we have yet to see, then, then we will play by the rules that apply to a motion to defer, as per the procedural bylaw.
Is that why you acknowledged him first?
Now, councillor Downs, that's not fair. He put his hand up first. He was the first one to have his hand up. So, I would appreciate it if you don't impugn that I have an ulterior motive here. Okay? So, councillor Scott, please continue. I lost maybe about, I'd say 45 seconds there, so you have about...
You have more time.
Pardon me?
You have more time.
Well, that, you can't assign your time to anybody else as per our procedural bylaw. So, you can have, you have about three minutes left.
Thank you. So, we'd put together a motion that said that bylaw 201383, a bylaw to re-divide the city of Kingston's electoral district boundaries, be deferred in order for staff to explore the concept of adding one additional city councillor elected at large to represent post-secondary students in Kingston. Now, this was a sincere motion being put forward, as we are trying to figure out how to represent students. But as we've seen tonight, we've had three groups here in opposition to this, and I'm not going to bring this forward.
Point of order? Yes, okay, so now I'm going to stop that this time.
Thank you very much. My point of order is, the speaker is now talking about bringing forward a motion. All that bylaw three is asking for is the confirmation of a motion that took place...
What's your point of order?
My point of order is, you can't discuss putting forward another motion germane to this without moving reconsideration.
That's, okay, so if I understand you correctly, your point of order is that this requires a reconsideration if that's going to happen?
Absolutely, because he's speaking about a totally different direction and motion, contrary to the motion that's gone through first and second reading.
First of all, he hasn't put anything forward yet, and nothing's been seconded yet. What I heard the councillor say a couple seconds ago was he said, "We, we're going to put this forward in good faith, but based on what we've heard, we have decided not to do that." That's what he just said. So, he was giving you the context to all of it. So, it's not a reconsideration, because it's a bylaw. You can defer a bylaw for any reason, but the point is, is that he never even ended up doing that, so it doesn't matter. So, your point of order is out of order, and I'll continue now with the speaker. Okay, so you have two minutes and 26 seconds left.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's try to be respectful of each other.
That being said, no motion is going forward, so I'm going to be speaking to the final vote here. So, what we've got here is a situation where, as the mayor said earlier, councillor Wrightsall and I have also been dealing with the other redistricting in the city of Kingston, which is the redistricting of Kingston and the Islands. City of Kingston is 20,000 population over the optimum for a riding, and therefore, the Federal Boundaries Commission has decided to take the countryside district and move it into another riding. Now, councillor Wrightsall and myself have dealt with the federal, both MPs, many times on this, and never once was it mentioned that the student numbers should be brought into this. Their consideration is that students vote in the municipality where they reside with their permanent address. If they haven't changed their permanent address to Kingston and the Islands, they don't get recognized here as a constituent. So, if there were the student numbers counted in, it would be 40,000 people over, they would have to take countryside.
Point of order.
Oh, gosh. That actually scared me.
Sorry, I was having a stutter.
I wasn't expecting it that time. Yes, I've stopped the clock again. Councillor Glover.
I think this comes under the code of conduct, uttering a statement which is known to be false. The Ontario Municipal Elections Act makes it absolutely clear that any Canadian citizen age of 18 may vote where they reside.
Okay, just stop right there, just stop right there, because now you're trying to justify the comment that you think is made in error, and that's not, that wouldn't be appropriate either. So, can you reference what part of the bylaw you're referring to? Just the number, all I want is the position of it in the bylaw.
I'll just find it in my bag, half second.
When you refer, when you called a point of order, did you not know conclusively at the time that it was a point of order?
I know uttering a false statement is contrary to the code of conduct. I don't have the number in front of me.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but councillor Glover, the code of conduct is not our procedural bylaw, it's a code of conduct. And that's why we voted to look at the opportunity to have an integrity commissioner in order to assess those kind of things. But, in terms of our procedural bylaw, it's not against our procedural bylaw. Now, according to my clock, and I apologize for the continual interruptions, councillor Scott, but I believe that you have about 45 seconds remaining on the clock. Okay? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to do this, but...
Whether they're electors, or however they do that, they didn't consider the students. So, that being said, if the federal government, which has our constitution, doesn't consider students in their writings, and the province, which follows along with the same writings, hasn't made the same request of the federal government for those writings, and the province actually puts together the Elections Act, these are the people who set the laws that we follow. If they aren't going to abide by it and count the students in, I do not see why we need to here. And I'm going to be supporting option one.
Thank you. So, would anybody else like to speak to this? Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. It's difficult to ask a question of a fellow councillor, but when, the comment was the province sets the Elections Act, we've just entered the area of how voters are created on a voting list. The province has a different way of creating a voter's list from a municipality. So, when students arrive in the city of Kingston and rent a house or an apartment, they are not counted as voters because the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation doesn't wind up putting them on a list. Small landlords don't have to send in a list of who lives in their buildings, and impact does not have to update the list. So, we have, and I couldn't get the answer to this one, because I wanted to find out how many years you, a house can go with the same tenants year after year, even though they've moved out many years later. I didn't get the answer today that I was hoping for, to find out when the enumeration cards go out. I believe it's July that say, to the occupant, or name a name in the house. At what point do they decide the house? We have no idea, so the cards just go to the occupant instead of a name, which is, could easily, and often is, as I've found out, 10 years out of date. It's big landlords that have a requirement to put all the names in of who lives in their building. Small landlords do not, and we know most students live in properties owned by small landlords. So, the enumeration process for a city is different from a province, and in theory, I worked it out, that because the census is done in May, when the students are gone, in theory, we could have more electors in the city of Kingston if everyone were properly recorded than population, because the houses aren't empty. But during a census, many of them are. We have a very odd system, and part of the, what the result of this odd system for municipalities is, we don't count a very large proportion of people. We've also made it awkward for them to find out how to vote, where to go. I know that Queen's is making some, some big efforts, and I laud that, and I hope that this whole process is going to make it even more interesting with students coming forward. But we don't have the same set of rules for municipal elections as we do for provincial and federal elections in finding out where the people are and whether they can, whether they are voters registered for a city municipally. So, I am not going to support this third reading. I think we have a mess that option four solved, and by voting for this, we are just going to continue a very, very upsetting situation for our citizens that is not cut and dried as seems some people want to make out. This is just black-and-white lines, population who aren't counted. There are reasons they're not counted that have nothing to do with students, and how long they live in the city, and all that sort of thing. So, I will not be supporting the third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in an interesting predicament, where we've hit 10:45, but we're already, we're already in the bylaws. So, basically, we need a motion to extend. If the motion to extend fails, then we just keep doing what we're doing till 11, and then we stop. Okay? So, will somebody move that? For what purpose, Deputy Mayor?
Move that we extend to complete the agenda.
To complete the agenda. Will somebody second it? So, I'll call the question when the deputy clerk's ready. Councillor Downs.
Thank you, Worship. I think that, I think the students spoke for themselves tonight, and Ian Reeve, and I believe it's Doug Johnson, asserted themselves as full citizens of Kingston. And I don't think that I could match, I might be able to match what Doug Johnson said, but I cannot match what Ian Reeve said in the elegant prose that he used. And I commend those, those students for standing up for themselves. They've asserted their rights as full citizens, and that's what it's all about. You know, the students of Kingston want nothing more, or nothing less, than to be equals to others in the city. And if we do that, then we count them. If we do not do that, we don't count them. So, I, if I was the principal of Queen's, I'd give them an A.
Councillor Glover.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. Several times this evening, we've heard an attempt to make an analogy between municipal electoral districts and constituencies at the provincial or federal level. I think it's a false analogy. I don't think it works for several reasons. First of all, as one of the delegations made the point in response to this sort of question, the number of students that we're talking about in a municipal district are a far greater proportion of the residents than overall in provincial or federal constituency. The second reason why I don't think it works is because while the province and the federal government might be using census data for creating their constituencies, for reviewing their constituencies, neither the province of Ontario, nor yet the federal government, have absolute fixed dates when the election must always be. So, in fact, the election could be held on the first of May, which is exactly the date when the census data is taken. We know that our election date is fixed by the province currently of the last Monday in the month of October. So, we have the anomaly that some of our residents are not here on the first of May. If the census was taken on the 15th of February, I'd be amazed if there wasn't an attempt to give the vote to the snowbirds. Give the vote to the snowbirds. There's a lot of misinformation about whether option one would disenfranchise the students or not. I think it was a deliberate attempt, I would guess it was an attempt to confuse the issue. Voting has two parts. One part is the ability to mark a ballot, and on that, the province has been absolutely clear. Anybody 18 years of age who is a Canadian citizen may vote in a municipal election if they are residing in the municipality on that day. There is no residency requirement. And further, students particularly attending an institution away from the family home may vote in both places. So, to say that a student is not allowed to vote here is false. The other thing which we've got to consider is this matter of effective representation, and that is a federal standard set by a federal court. I introduced the matter of effective representation at that November meeting. At that time, I explained that I had the opportunity to refer that November staff report to a professional colleague, an acquaintance of mine, who had expertise. And that person said to me, as I said at that meeting, "If you don't count students, you're going to run afoul of the Municipal Elections Act, and you're going to have a charter case on your hands." In identifying the problem of drawing boundaries, I made it quite clear that I'd be very happy to exchange, to provide that contact information to staff. The city subsequently used that person in the firm of associates, of which he's a member, to prepare the report. What we are voting on is something prepared without that input, which we were told would certainly be subject to a challenge. If you're not going to count the ballot that you allow somebody to mark, you are disenfranchising them. And that's what effective representation is about. Chief Justice McLaughlin made that point in 1991.
Thirty seconds.
And it's about numbers. Downtown has not lost 5,000 people. Drive around the streets of downtown, there are no empty derelict houses. They are filled, and every member of the planning committee knows there are more people in them now that there's student housing than when there are families. We have more than 5,000 people. They're the missing people that you don't want to count. I believe they should be counted. I will vote no to bylaw seven.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
I just want to start by saying that there has been... I just want to start by saying that there has been a ton of miscommunication, in my opinion, on this issue. Students are allowed to vote, for starters. Students are allowed to vote just like they were in the past. The information that we are receiving, it's interesting, because there have been some people that have referred to this as gerrymandering, and that the council's gerrymandering. But the truth of the matter is, is that the option that's before us in the bylaw is literally an extension of what we've been operating with over the past several years. It is using the exact same data source that we've previously been using, and applying that data source, be given that the data has changed due to growth in the suburbs, and now applying that new data source to the previous model. This is the littlest change possible or incidence of gerrymandering that is possible, because we've really done nothing different, except apply, applied a new data source to the existing model. I'll ask a question through you, Deputy Mayor, to Mr. Wallace. Mr. Wallace, is option one valid? The option that we've, is it a valid option in terms of using data?
Mr. Wallace?
Through you, Madam Chair. Option one was an option that was put before council as an alternate option in the event that council decided not to include the post-secondary students in the population counts for the districts. It was a version of option one based on eligible electors, was the preferred option originally that staff put before council back in November. Subsequent to that, staff was given direction by council to go and seek advice as to how total population numbers could be included in the analysis of the new electoral boundaries, and that's what we did. We went out and had a number of public meetings, and ultimately, we came back to council as per council's policy and in terms of the overall review from the resolution back in May of 2010, to bring back a preferred option and two alternate options. And as we indicated in our report to council, in staff's view, either of those options, whether it was the preferred option or one of the two alternate options, staff would be supportive of either of those options as chosen by council.
So to follow on that, you feel confident that you've, you followed the correct process in order to determine with option one? You have followed a correct process?
Through you, Madam Chair. The process that we followed is similar to the process that is used by the majority of Ontario municipalities. We use total population based on the census in order to follow more closely with the notion of effective representation, rather than just using eligible electors. And as has been alluded to throughout this process, we have been in contact with Watson and Associates, including Dr. Williams, and they have reviewed all of the staff reports. And as we noted at our last, at the last meeting and in our report, in their view, any one of the three options were defensible at the OMB.
So, and Counsel Glover mentions the, the associates that are contacted, and they've indicated that they're comfortable with it. Counselor Glover said, Deputy Mayor, at the previous council meeting that we had in November, that if the valid, if it's a valid process, and if it's been followed correctly, it's difficult to argue with the outcome. We've heard from staff, it's a valid process, it's been followed appropriately, but now there seems to be a huge opposition to it. Those are, Counsel Glover's words quoted from the WIC Standard article that was on the following day. I just would like to conclude by saying that it has been stated by many councillors around this table in the past that we should never be threatened by the, by an OMB appeal in a decision that we make. And I couldn't agree more. I know that many councillors have said that in the past. I tried to find a solution. Yes, it was a harebrained idea, but I tried. And it was in the 11th hour, and it didn't make sense, but I tried. And I regret, I was, to be honest, I was surprised when the AMS didn't like the idea. But I realized that there are other post-secondary institutions I should be talking to, too. And then to hear from the postgraduate society, I appreciate that. But I'm comfortable going forward with this. And although an OMB might cost money, at least the OMB appeal will validate it one way or the other. And then we will know what the best decision was. And that might be the cost we have to pay in order to find that. So I will support the bylaw, because I think that we followed a fair process that involves the least amount of change from any previous process that we've used in the past. So I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
I return the chair to you, and Counsel Neil would like to have, be added to the speakers list.
Sure. Counselor Neil?
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate the question that you just asked of Mr. Wallace. Because the reality, and this is the reality that will go forward to the OMB, is that staff were given a task in November to find a way to be able to count appropriately student population. They came back with a preferred option, a staff-preferred option. Not talking about alternate options, talking about a staff-preferred option that indeed followed the direction of this council in requesting that they find a way to validate and to count students. So they came back with a very detailed preferred option. What happened is that that preferred option not only didn't have an opportunity to be presented at any public meeting, indeed, it didn't have an opportunity to come to the council floor for discussion or debate. Because the mayor recognized a mover and a seconder who moved an alternate option before the preferred option ever got to this council floor. So not-
Just on a point of personal privilege, I'll stop your time. I just hope that you're not suggesting that I purposely picked a mover and a seconder. I mean, I follow the procedure-
I was stating a fact, that's all. And it was a fact that you recognized. A mover and a seconder-
Because they put their hand up first, not because I had an ulterior motive.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just pointing out the process.
Thank you.
So here we have, we're going to go to the OMB with the, with the position that the staff were given a job to do. They completed the job, following the criteria and the, and the direction we gave them. They had a preferred option that wasn't even allowed to get to the council floor, wasn't even allowed to be debated. That, I think, is, is terrible. It's unconscionable that that should happen. After all the hard work that our staff did, after we asked them to do that work, after we gave them the opportunity, after public meetings, they come back with a preferred option, and we're not even allowed to talk about it. Now that is going to be an interesting presentation at an OMB hearing, I would think. And as I pointed out to the AMS president facetiously a few days, few days ago, you can't swing, sorry, all due respect to my colleague, you can't swing a cat in a law office in this country without hitting a Queens grad. And there is going to be lots of Queens, there's going to be lots of alumni lawyers that are going to weigh in on what their opinion is. And the fact that there are two communities that are doing the right thing, at least two, but two that we know of, Windsor and Guelph, and that they are much closer to the makeup of Kingston, in that they have a high concentration of students in a definable area of the city, in both Guelph and Windsor, and they make an attempt with boundary determination to count those students. So I said this last week, I'm, I'm saying it again, I don't often beg or plead around the horseshoe, but I think, for the reason, reasons of democratic discourse, this council and this community should have an opportunity to speak to the preferred option, which has been refused by maneuvering of, of some members of this council. The preferred option never even came to this floor.
Point of personal privilege, what do you mean by, I don't like the insinuation by maneuvering by members of council? You're impugning motive there. I, I, will you withdraw that comment, please, Counselor?
I will.
Thank you. You have thirty, thirty-four seconds left.
Thank you very much. So this is our last opportunity to, to have a chance to reflect on and look at the staff's preferred model. Or we're going to go forward to an OMB hearing with the clear message that the staff's preferred option, following our instructions, weren't, wasn't even discussed publicly, was never presented publicly at council or elsewhere. And that's unfortunate.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last seven years, I have had the privilege of teaching at RMC. And I think that I have one of the best jobs in the world, because I spend most of my working life with students. I think they add tremendous value to our community. There's no doubt in my mind that Kingston would be a radically different city without Queens, St. Lawrence, and RMC. But one of the things that I'm always careful to do with my students is to challenge them to see the bigger picture, to see the context, and to understand all of the consequences that are connected to a particular action. In this case, let's consider the context. We know that the majority of municipalities in Ontario that have a university or a college do not count student numbers. Is it because Kitchener Waterloo thinks that students should be second-class citizens? Is it because Sudbury thinks that students don't count? No. Our city staff came to us originally with no options with students. And then after we asked them to look into the possibility of adding students, they still came back to us with an option that they said that they would support, that they said was defensible at an OMB hearing that didn't count the students. Why? Is it because our city staff doesn't want the students to be counted because they don't like them? No. There are real concerns with the data. Right now, the census only counts you once. And if it counts you in Kingston, great. And if it counts you somewhere else, great. You can always apply to add your name to the voters' list here in Kingston. That's the way it works, and that's the way you keep the same standard for everybody. So here are the three concerns that I have. The first concern with adding, and keep in mind, these are student estimates, the first concern I have is accuracy. If you read the staff report, you will read that for RMC students, staff had no information about where they lived, so they just added them all to the east side of the river in Council Wrights's district. And yet, I know for a fact that many of my students in upper years live in the west end of the city. Some of them live in my district. I have a problem philosophically with throwing away a standard of accuracy, because democracy can be in danger when we suddenly start to play fast and loose with rules like that. The second problem I have is equality. And I thought that the, our representatives that we heard from tonight said it very well, that Queens students shouldn't be treated any differently. But that's the concern. Because what we're doing here is we're saying that student population should be treated differently from other temporary residents, like for example, our military. We have many in our military community that are here for only a short period of time, and guess what? The census doesn't count them either. And so they have to apply to have their name added to the voters' list. So it's keeping the same standard for everyone. That, in my view, is what's fairest of all. Third concern, we've heard a lot about perception, that this sends the wrong message to students because of their perception, and I understand that. But there is another perception issue. There is another danger with adding the student population, and Mayor Garretson alluded to this, that because of the population shift in our community, we are due for redistribution under the current rules. And yet, the only way to block that redistribution is by changing the way that we measure things. That sends a very different message to some in the suburbs in our community. So there's no easy answer here. And I think that's what we're hearing. This is why we have the divisions that we do. No one's side is 100% right, no one's side is 100% wrong. But at the end of the day, it's how you evaluate it. And my concerns lead me to say that, yes, I value students, and I hope, and I would fully support a motion to direct staff to do recruitment drives at Queens, St. Lawrence, and RMC to get as many students as possible on the voters' list, to get them to participate in municipal elections. Let's do that.
Thirty seconds.
But I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable with not considering the context and the bigger picture. And if that's what I've challenged my students to do, then I better live by them. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Counsel Hutchison?
Thank you, you worship. I guess, I think, I find it rather odd, there's a few things I find rather odd here. Back in the RAS council, we passed a motion to kick off this process. And that process was to recognize that we needed to redraw the districts. In doing so, we were well aware that the west end, by a matter of representation by population, was undercounted, and that something had to be done about that. And we voted unanimously. We knew there would be redrawing of the boundaries, we knew there'd be recounting of the bodies, but we voted unanimously to do that. Why? Because it was just the right thing to do. And that the districts in the west needed to be redrawn, and in the cities to some extent, probably, we didn't know the full upshot of it. So I find that kind of odd, because it seems to me there's a distinct lack of generosity here. It's like there's an advantage to be had, and you take that advantage regardless of how it affects the rest, the bulk of the city, or the, the center of the city in this case. I have never tried to cast my vote in that way, and I won't, just on principle. There's also the oddity that we have a rural population which the councillors said feel that their vote is diluted. In fact, there is a smaller population in the rural district. And the three options we just had, they were 20.9% below average, 20.9% below average, and 10.1% below average. In other words, they're not, their vote is not diluted. They're marginally overrepresented. And again, there seems to be a lack of generosity in terms and in consideration when it concerns the issues in the center of the city, where we know there are people and we're not counting them. So we can play around with that, but the bottom line is, those people exist. They want to be counted. They're citizens, they deserve to be counted. Of course, there are differences, as was pointed out before, between federal and provincial enumeration, although I will agree, as was made last time, if the federal and provincial governments were responsible, we wouldn't be sitting here having this. governments were responsible, we wouldn't be sitting here having this. There'd be an enumeration, uh, before every election, and we'd know how many people there are. I mean, who here is not surprised that we have a city of a hundred and forty-nine thousand people, when we're sitting out there, it says a hundred and twenty-three-five? You know, and you can slice, you know, you can flip that back and forth any way you want, but one thing for sure, and talk about heads and bed stacks, you know, we got way more people than we thought we, we had. So it bothers me that the generosity was shown by every central city councillor, and everyone in the east and the west, to have the recount done, but we're not getting the same consideration back.
Okay, that's, that's, you know, that's borderline impugning motive, so please just be careful.
It's not motive, I'm just, I'm, I'm just talking about what's, appears to me to be happening. So, you know, when I vote, I look at what I think is the benefits, you know? In the east end, I voted twice to improve the bus service and other measures. In the west end, I voted for water and sewer improvements, and for bus service improvements, and express route service improvements. What's that do, are those things, uh-
Point of order, Your Worship, he's, he's not on the, the bylaw at all.
Whoa, I gotta, when you say point of order, I have to recognize you first. Okay. Point of order is raised by Counsel Reitzel. Counsel Reitzel, what is your point of order?
Uh, he's not sticking with the topic, which is the bylaw itself, Your Worship. He's, uh, he's trying to draw, uh, east and west in, into, into an argument that doesn't belong here this evening.
Um, I think that Counselor Hutchison is basically trying to, um, explain why he's voting the way that he is, and that he has, and what he's done in the past, and he's trying to justify his motives for encouraging other people to vote on this one. So it's, it's getting close to the line, but I think that what he's saying is fair and is in order, and you have thirty-five seconds remaining, Counselor.
Mainly what I wanna put forward is that there's all kinds of consideration, a lot of it right, to redraw the boundaries, but I think it should cut all ways. If we don't count the students, just because they're not counted in other cities, doesn't make it right, as is recognizing a couple of the cities, as we may well find out, especially when it can be shown that you can do it, that you can count them. It's talking about accuracy and so on, staff said they made conservative estimates. There's thousands not accounted for.
Thank you. Anybody who hasn't spoken to this? Yes, Counsel Reitzel, you have not spoken to it.
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. First off, what bothers me over this whole issue is the fact that there are some councillors trying to vilify the rest of us by dragging the students into this. There, there's my issue.
No, you're impugning motive by suggesting that they're trying to vilify.
Okay, I, I, I-
So I, I, I would encourage you to withdraw that comment.
I withdraw the remark.
Thank you.
Um, okay, what bothers me is that we played by the rules. And at the end of the day, when, uh-
Point of personal privilege?
Let me stop the clock this time. Yes, point of personal privilege, Counsel Downs?
The councillor said that, uh, he's playing by the rules, which impunes it, the other side is not. I wanna make sure that you as chair know that I play by the rules, and I follow the procedural bylaws of the-
I would like to finish my comment, he cut him-
Okay, oh, just give a sec. Okay, so, um, Counsel Downs, when you raise the point of order, or the point of privilege, you should just tell me what the point of personal privilege is, and not try to then explain the rationale behind it like Counsel Glover was doing earlier. If he said, if Counsel Reitzel said, "I play by the rules," that doesn't necessarily mean that other people don't play by the rules. So, um, I think that what he said is fair, and allow him to continue, please continue.
Thank you. And what I wanted to say is my decision was based on the rules of the day, the way they were set up. And what, we, we've thrown a red, red herring out there by, uh, bringing the student issue into here, and if I can talk from experience, I had three boys away to school, uh, they always received their cards here in Kingston to vote in the election because their address was home. You know they were in Waterloo and Sioux St. Marie and wherever else. They didn't vote in the communities, they were going to schooling because they came home. And if they were here at election time, they took their cards and they went and voted. And I don't know why we got ourselves into this, maybe, maybe I, there's something here I don't understand in terms of what happens, but I, I'll say it again, anybody can vote in this city, just go down to the city hall here, fill out your registration card, and go vote, any student can. And then when you look at, uh, how many students have bothered to vote in the past, does it mean that because all of a sudden we find ourselves changing a district downtown, that all of a sudden students really matter? They're, they should matter all the time, not just for the fact of changing a district. And I've made the point that we all represent the students, because when we're elected in a district, it's because that's the way we do it here, but we represent the whole city as a councillor. If we went, and I'll say it again, if we went to at-large councillors, what does that do for the students? What does it change? If we were, if we're all elected at large, we all still have to do the same job. If a student calls you up and they have an issue, you take it forward on their behalf, because that's what we do. And I encourage the students, get out there, you've got all kinds of time on your hands after the, the exams are done, go down to the city hall here, line up, I don't care if the lineup goes three miles down, we've got to hire part-time help. Go there and register to vote in the next election. Go right ahead. But don't be used as pawns in a game that doesn't make sense. We've dragged them in here, and I don't think they belong in this forum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just be careful about, um, saying that individuals are being used by pawns in this public forum, it's not appropriate, uh, to be making such a statement. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
Quick point of order, if I could?
Uh, you may.
Just to clarify, uh-
Wait, wait.
Previous speaker-
No, excuse me-
Could you hear my, could you hear me out?
I'm gonna only listen to you for as long as you talk to a point of order, so, hold on a second, I actually looked this up today with a clerk.
This is taking longer than my point of order.
Well, but if it doesn't end up being a point of order, then it's not fair to everybody else. So a point of order is to, if you are concerned about one of the four following, a breach of the rules of procedural council, there's a difficulty in continuing the meeting, the relevance of the discussion to the scope of the motion, or an irregularity in proceedings, uh, including the lack of quorum. So whatever you say on a point of order has to be that. So it shouldn't be starting off by saying, "I'd like to clarify," because that's not a point of order. So what, your point of order?
The previous speaker suggested that students can register, they, I don't understand-
That's not a point of order, Counselor Neal, I just went over it with you!
I believe that that's not possible.
Come on, why, you, don't, don't, like, come on, like, I just went over it with you, and, and I read it to you, and I tried to like make sure that you knew what the rules were exactly, and then you just jumped on the opportunity, um, to just get another word in, and that's not fair to everybody else who's spoken. So I would really appreciate it if in the future, um, everybody could adhere to the rules that our procedural bylaw sets out. And if you're not happy with the procedural bylaw, then by all means, bring forward a motion to amend it, and then we can amend it differently, so. Okay, so with that, um, I'll return, um, to the speakers list, because you had just finished Counsel Reitzel. I don't have any more speakers, would anybody else like to speak to this? Who hasn't spoken? Okay, so, um, with that, I will ask the clerk to call the, um, vote on the third reading of the bylaw seven. That carries. Um, the next, uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Oh, were there more after that? Okay.
So it's moved by Counsel Berg, second by Counsel Downs. That ball is two through five, um, and fi, two through five, and eight through sixteen be given their third reading.
So vote on that? All votes, and please vote now? That carries. What else do you have? Uh, motion to adjourn, Deputy Mayor Hector, second to Counsel Berg. Please vote on the adjournment. Two remaining on, on a motion to adjourn, please. It's carried, thank you, have a good night.